Welcome, ladies and gentlemen of the town of Darien. Tonight is Tuesday, April 27th. This is a Planning and Zoning Commission Public Hearing and a General Meeting at the end. Tonight Jeremy Ginsberg and myself are room 213 in Town Hall. And we're also having this meeting virtually on go to meeting as per the governor's executive orders. Today we have, I think, five items on our general meeting, I mean, on our public hearing, and then we'll go into the general meeting. So without further ado, first item on our agenda is proposed amendments to the Darien zoning regulations, COZR number one, I like that, 2021, put forth by Parklands Darien LLC. Proposal to amend, amend, add, and new, and add a new section 460 to the Darien zoning regulations and to amend section 796 and 904 of the regulation to establish a new design office multifamily residential zone, overlay zone, that would be applied to the designated office DO zone throughout the town area. The overlay zone would fit multifamily residential dwellings as a principal use requiring a special permit. Applications would be subject to a special permit review by the commission. The existing parking stands for multifamily drugs would be reduced. The full text of the proposed regulation amendment is on file and available in the town clerk's office and the Darien Planning and Zoning Office for Inspection and online at www.darienct.gov/accesspzc. Jeremy, what do we got?
Sure, this is an application to create a, a new overlay zone or floating zone. The hearing tonight, we've set aside about an hour for it. The applicant will be giving their presentation tonight and will be continuing this to another night to give everyone a little more time to understand it, review it, and then at the next meeting, which will give a date and time later on, will be more time for the public to get involved. So tonight is going to focus mainly on the applicant's presentation and an explanation proposal. But before we get started, I just wanted to read, because it's a zoning change, we have to refer this to the Western Connecticut Council Governments. They sent in a comment in a memo dated March 15, 2021. The opinion of West Cog staff is that the proposal is of little interest and with minimal intermunicipal impact. Therefore, it is not being forwarded to adjacent municipalities and the regional staff is making no comment. So I wanted to make sure that was in the record. And as I said, I will give the applicant about 40 minutes or so to an hour to make their presentation and then we'll explain when the next hearing is going to be, how that next hearing will work. So tonight we'll be focused on those aspects and next hearing there'll be much more significant time for the public to get input. Just for the record, there have been numerous letters and emails sent in for the record on this matter. Those have been posted to the town website and put into the hard copy file, which is here in the planning and zoning office. All of those emails and letters have been sent off to the Planning and Zoning Commission members and, and they all have copies of them and continue to receive them. So.
Okay, tonight I know we have a, a big binder here for Redness and Mead. Craig Flaherty, who's an engineer, has worked on this before. And then I think there's some other people on your team. Craig, are you, are you a hitter?
There is, Mr. Chairman. This is William Hennessy. I'm here as well. I'm an attorney with Carmody, Torrance, Sandec and Hennessy and Stanford office at 707. I also, along with Craig and my colleague Jason Klein, who's somewhere in this milieu of people on the screen, are representing the applicant, Parkland Darien LLC. And with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to begin the hearing and then pass it over to Craig and I'll explain what roles each of us will play. But I would also like to point out to you, first of all, we fully intend to be able to honor and respect the time constraints that Jeremy indicated would, would be comfortable for the commission. And we completely understand the importance of this application and we're sensitive to the fact that a large number of community members would like to speak and therefore we fully expect and expected that this would be continued for some thoughtful consideration. Parklands is the, the applicant here. They are the owner of an office building known as Three Parklands, which is the building at the end of Parkland's Drive. It's the only office building left. Representing the applicant and the ownership interest is Bob Gillan. Bob is a principal of the ownership interest. They have owned the properties, the entire park since 2005. Bob is what I would describe as a very Anson operator. His, his office is there. He's there all the time. He knows what's going right, what's going wrong. He has a dialogue and a relationship with his neighbors. And you should know, I think at the outset of this application, that Bob began this process by reaching out to his neighbors and discussing what he had hoped to accomplish with them. He's had one-on-one conversations with all of the folks that would customarily receive notice if this weren't just a tax change. He's also held group meetings. He's held meetings with the town recreation department, with representatives of the Darien Land Trust and with the Selig Woods folks, all to try to educate people and frankly, to listen to people so that we could react in a way that would create support. And we hope to get to that point. We do. I wanted you to, to, to know that at the outset. This application, as Jeremy pointed out, is simply a text change. It seeks to create a vehicle, in this case, an overlay zone or a floating zone, whatever you'd like to call it, that would be eligible for being applied to properties in the designed office park district. And it wouldn't have the effect of changing any of the aerial bulk height or dimensional development rights that are allowed in that zone at the moment. All it would do is allow for a new use to be applied to that zone under the same constraints in terms of setback area height as presently applied. And the new use would be multifamily development. So the buildings can't get bigger, they can't get taller, they can't get closer to anybody, but a new use could go into those buildings. And it would be effectuated by virtue of another set of applications, which we hope we're lucky enough to be able to come before you with if this is approved. And those next batch of applications would be two. They would be filed simultaneously and one would be an application to change the zone map to land the floating zone or apply the overlay zone, whatever, whatever you're more comfortable with. And the companying application would be a full special permit application where all the details of the proposed development would be spelled out and chronicled and all the supporting documents evidencing the safety of traffic and utilities and sewer capacity and water and all those things, including design and offsite impacts such as noise and light and construction issues, including, you know, things short term like that, would be discussed and hopefully addressed to the satisfaction of neighbors. Those second batch of applications, of course, are not before you. What, what Craig will talk a little about though, is the product of a study that, you know, Mr. Gillan did to try to understand what he could develop here. And he knew that talking in concepts to folks like you or to neighbors is, is a difficult task unless you have something to show. So he has developed concept plans and we're happy to discuss them. They were part of the application package. They show a concept with 59 units. I think there was six studios and 27 one bedrooms and 26 twos with below grade parking. That is the type of thing that we would hope is the product of, of the activities here. And in all respects, it would conform to the, to the other provisions of your regulations, including the ones that, that we've learned may change for simple inclusionary housing and parking and things of that nature. So we view this application as really just another step in what you as a commission have done, in our view, is a very admirable job of bringing Darien along in terms of its ability to produce affordable and inclusionary housing and increasing the opportunity for people to choose different typologies of housing. And I was reading your summary of your study you did about a year or so ago on, you know, inclusionary and multifamily housing. And frankly, I was quite impressed that over the last 20 years, you produced it, not just approved, but produced close to 900, I think it was, units of multifamily housing, over one third of which are off market and provide different opportunities for housing and different price points from very, very, very expensive stuff to, to stuff that is affordable at off, off market prices, which is admirable and for which you probably don't get enough credit for. But this, I think, would be another step in that. And it's a thoughtful step. And at the end of the day, what we're asking you to do is approve a, a, a text change and you're well schooled and you know that this is the kind of application that you as a commission have very, very wide berth under the law. You know, you are making a legislative decision here and you're, you're vested by virtue of you sitting on this commission as folks that are deemed to have special knowledge of Darien and they're the leaders in how to plan the town. So the law gives you wide berth, but the law also says that, you know, your touchstone in all of your decisions is how this proposal, this zone text amendment would comport to the provisions of the town plan of conservation and development. That is sort of the guy, the, the guardrails, if you will, of the decision process. And Craig has prepared, I thought, a very detailed analysis of that. He'll talk in more detail about it in a moment. But we, we, we didn't want a moment to pass or we don't want this application to proceed too far without telling you that A, we think the town has done a terrific job and B, we think this is another tool in the toolbox, if you will, to continue down that path of providing a wider range of housing. Um, and before I turn it over to Craig, and I will do so in a moment, I think some context would be helpful for you as you go through the rest of the presentation tonight and, and, and also into future meetings. And the context might be good because I think all of the zones that are eligible for this overlay, and we'll, we'll detail what all those properties are, have a common thread running through them. And the common thread is that they're all office parks who either have, such as this one, or some they likely will reach the end of their economic life, their, their useful life, for different reasons. Some perform very well now and would have no interest in this, in this tax change. But others might at some point say, hmm, this is a good tool. So Parklands is an interesting case study, if you will. Craig, do we have a, a, like a, an aerial? I don't need anything with great detail on it, just an aerial we could put up. This is a great case study and, you know, sort of, I would say, late 20th century stuff, right? So if you look at this, it's just remarkable what we have. We have not just I-95, but we have the rest stop for I-95 directly abutting this property to the north. And to the west, I guess the southwest, we have a, a very large, a way of two large open space conservation, we'll call it open space park areas, you know, over 40 acres, I think, in total. Craig can correct me if I'm wrong. To the south of it, we have a, a very nice, very traditional, single family development. And in the middle of it, in the middle of the, the hole in the donut there is a vintage 1960s office park, which is going through a transition.
So just to clarify, Bill, I've got north rotated to the right on this exhibit. So the open space is here to the south and, and perimeter is to the east and I-95 is, is to the west and north, just to clarify.
Thank you, Craig. I hope I didn't confuse anybody by my, by my poor eyes. I can't see the, the compass dial. At, at any rate, it really I-95, I think, we didn't do a true forensic on this, but if you just look at the dates that things fell together, it was probably the construction of Interstate 95 that could rise to everything you see here. So, you know, in the years preceding the, the opening of 95, the state, of course, was buying land to construct the highway. And when the highway was completed in the mid 50s and opened, it began disposing of the remnant parcels that it had no use for anymore. And so we wind up with a situation where the Dunlap Associates, who owned all of what is now Parkland's Office Park and other lands, purchased from the state of Connecticut more land. And their amalgamation eventually wound up in large part being donated to create Dunlap Woods. They donated it to the land trust, a good chunk of it, not all of it. The town of Darien at around the same time, 1964, picked up Selig Woods. It was probably just leftover state property, heated to the town. Dunlap and Selig Woods, Dunlap and the town of Darien created a, an agreement to maintain what is known as Parkland's Drive and it traverses both public and private lands. But, you know, it functions like a road by virtue of the agreement. The Dunlap Associates Group developed the office park and they did, they, they developed it right at that same time that all this land was being disposed. The first building, which was a, just under 24,000 square feet, was right at the north end. I got that right, correct, right? Right, right where Craig's pointer is, right in there. And it, it was a, you know, a traditional and very successful for many years suburban office building outside of the central business district, a little away, very convenient though to highway traffic interchanges and it was an attractive asset. So, so, so attractive that 20 years later, they built Three Parklands Drive in the mid 80s, 35, 34 and change, almost 35,000 square foot, two-story office building. It's two stories over a basement park in that area. And it, it functioned well and it went through some ownership changes. And in 2005, Bob Gillan and his partners bought it and it performed well for them until, of course, as, as we know, and those of us in the real estate world know, it, it functioned well until one day it stopped functioning so well. And the, the, in particular, the original 1960s building at the front became very difficult. And the process of redeveloping this 7.9 acre DO zoned property began. And in 2016, came before this commission and advocated that we needed to introduce a new use. There was a demand for a new use. It would relieve the town of a failing office building. It would reward the town with a use that was needed by the community and with added tax revenue. And that new use, of course, was the senior housing facility developed by LCB, which exists there now. Bob continued on with his efforts to improve and make successful, the more modern of the office buildings, but it's been a challenge. The market is very difficult for that when you're hovering around 40% vacancy and you're in the grips of a global pandemic, the, the future doesn't look bright and it probably doesn't look bright for any of these buildings who have some of the inherent disadvantages of not being tied to a central business district. And so the, the decision was made to develop it as residential with your permission, of course. Now, the, the idea didn't come to Bob organically. He was approached several years ago by a housing developer and thought it was a bad idea. But he thought, I think, and he can speak for himself, that the, the specific proposal by those developers wasn't, wasn't particularly good. And as he thought about the use, he thought he could do a, a better job and has really taken on the excitement, if you will, of being not only the developer, but the ongoing owner and manager of this sort of, you know, you will call it 59 unit rental housing project. So that's the context, that's the case study, if you will. The, the property that my client owns and now would be a good time, I think, for me to turn it over to Craig to walk you through the details of how we think we could best redevelop, reposition this property and why we think it absolutely conforms to the plan of conservation and development would be another good, good, strong sound move by the Darien community to amend its zoning regulations. Craig?
Thank you very much, Bill. For record, Craig Flaherty, principal with Redness and Mead, land use consulting company with offices in Stanford and Wilton. I, I am going to give a rather fulsome overview of the proposed text amendment in, in some detail, the guidance that we found within plan of conservation and development in some detail. I'll also show you the illustrative plans, you know, what we're thinking that this might look like at the end of the day, so you can kind of visualize what we're talking about here. I, I know the commission members are very experienced on much of the stuff I'm going to be talking about, but if you would grant me the time, I think it would be helpful for interested members of the public to hear it, to hear it as well. So I think with the great introduction from Bill, I think it's most appropriate to maybe kind of cut to the chase and show you what we think this could look like should the application be approved and the, and the next subsequent applications be approved. So this is a portion of our illustrative site plan oriented the same way with north to the right. This was included with your application materials, but we've added over the aerial on the south side of the site where used to be Three Parklands Drive, the office building, which will now be, which may now be Three Parklands Drive, the apartment building. And the idea would be to remove the two stories of office over the existing garage and to add three stories of apartments above that existing garage. It extends a little bit out from the existing garage on the south edge and extends a little bit out from that existing garage on the north edge. But that's generally where it was. We, we thought long and hard about reusing the structure, reusing parts of it, but ultimately you had to strip it down to the steel beams and it still wasn't the right shape effectively for apartments. It was, it's a very square, wide floor plan building and that's why we're proposing the redevelopment you see. There's a drop off in the front. There's a, there's an outdoor courtyard on the side here you see with the number five. There's a way for, you know, the larger emergency vehicles that need to traverse the site to get back out by having 360 degree access around the building. That, that access here on the east side would be limited again to emergency vehicles. And, and we'll talk a little bit about the ability to provide more parking for the open space preserve and, and a more, and a nicer entrance at a safer location. Right now, it turns out that technically only two of the spaces that are out there are actually dedicated to the public and for the open space preserve. Bob's been gracious enough to allow folks to park from time to time when they need to. But what this application would do is provide permanent exclusive parking for the open space in the way of 11 additional spaces you see there on the south side of the site. Also includes a new entrance. Right now, the entrance is, is up here by where the hand is, which is right at the apex of the sharp turn. And sometimes you have folks standing around there and we thought it would be a lot safer to have that entrance away from that turn at the end of what effectively would be a dead end when this section is not in use. So there, there are the component, components of the plan. This is a rendering prepared by the project architect in Monroe Partnership. This rendering is of the front of the building here by the drop off on the north side, kind of looking at the amenity space on the east side of the building. Again, you can see the three levels of apartments. The, the lower level would be preserved, a little bump out on the south side. And this is kind of a typical floor plate. Bill already went over those numbers, a total of 59 units, six studios, 27 one bedrooms and 26 two bedrooms. So that's, that's where we're trying to get to. But we have to start with, you know, where we are today. This is now a text amendment application. So I think the flashy exhibits are over. You might see a little too much text on your screen for a virtual meeting. But what I think is important to understand, Bill referred to. There are plenty of allowed uses on the site today. Two are principal permitted principal uses. They just need a modified site plan to be enacted and that's business and professional offices as well as medical and dental offices. And then there are uses allowed today that require special permits, including research and development laboratories, educational philanthropic, cultural and recreational uses, assisted living facilities, as we know, clubs and lodges, churches and places of worship, medical and dental clinics, childcare centers are all uses that require special permits. But, you know, why am I showing this to you? Because as Bill noted in the introduction, the text amendment before you is not seeking to change the allowed building coverage. We're not changing the allowed building height, which is three stories and 35 feet. We're not changing the setbacks, the distance the building has to be from the property boundary. All of these, we'll call Balkan mass standards, we're proposing to leave as they are. So the, the idea of the, 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 the size and location and appearance of the building is something that could occur today under your existing regulations. It's just that instead of office or assisted living or a school or what have you that might otherwise be allowed by the current regs, we're asking to add multifamily dwellings to that mix. So it's not the size of the building we're talking about or the fact that there can be a three-story building there, which there can. It's the fact that we like to add multifamily as one of the uses effectively allowed in the zone. It's, we're not adding it as a special permit use in the designed office zone. We're proposing an overlay zone. So why, why propose an overlay zone? I'll get now to the details of the text amendment. So this is appendix D of the application. It starts what is the new language that would be inserted into your regs. The reason we did it this way was to give the, a commission a little more discretion once they finally see the, the final details of a special permit application, which would have things like, address things like traffic and drainage and landscaping and lighting and, and architecture. At that time, they can, at the same time, deciding the merits of that special permit application, effectively approve the, the amendment to the zoning map that would allow this overlay zone to land on the site. If they don't, if they make a finding that it's not an appropriate site for it and it's not, doesn't have supportive infrastructure, and I'll get to that in a second, I'm sorry, it's a little confusing, then they don't have to land the zone. So we've done it in this way to give the zoning board yet another step in the process of approval. But here we are. So we're creating a section 460. The name of the section is the Designed Office Multifamily Residential Overlay Zone. And it starts with section 461. Section 461 is background and purposes. It's a part of every zone. And in this case, it says the Designed Office Multifamily Residential Overlay Zone is an overlay zone intended to allow for the conversion or redevelopment of suburban office campuses or portions thereof in the designed office zone into multifamily units for rental or sale. In keeping with the plan of conservation and development, the overlay zone encourages the continued diversification of Darien's housing portfolio to include a range of housing types to meet a broad array of housing needs. Multifamily units offer opportunities for people for whom a single family residence or large town home does not meet their life stage and life cycle, lifestyle needs. This includes younger people for whom an apartment may be more affordable as well as older residents seeking to move down from a single family home and its inherent maintenance requirements. The creation of additional dwelling units within the zone also creates a more affordable below market rate dwelling units in accordance with the inclusionary zoning regs. Right now, set at 12% of units created, which in this case would be seven units. And it's not just the below market rate units that would be more affordable. The, the idea is that when the predominant option The idea is that when the predominant option for living in Darien is a single family residence, you are creating a market that is open for people that A, want a single family residence, because that serves their life stage needs and can afford a single family residence. So just by virtue of having apartments that are smaller and square footage, they themselves are more affordable than much of the housing stock in the town. So you are opening options for folks and diversifying the housing stock. So I've used that term now, which is continue to diversify Darien's housing portfolio. So this, this whole paragraph, we didn't make this up. This paragraph really almost entirely came out of your plan of conservation and development, which of course is your, a guidance document for the town created by the Planning and Zoning Commission in their role really as the planning board for the town. You do it once every 10 years and the idea is that it says, this is where we are today. Where do we want to be or what direction do we want to chart over the next 10 years? And this plan was put together over the course of two years with professional planning assistance, with a number of public hearings and public discussions and public outreach sessions. And I'm gonna touch on, there's a, there's a full analysis in our, in our application documents in appendix C. I'm gonna touch on kind of three pieces. The first piece being the goal or the what. The second piece being the details or the how, and the third piece being the where. And all three of these things are addressed in your P O C D. So right out at the top in a section called, in the executive summary, it says, "One of the primary strategies for development of the town is to continue to diversify Darien's housing portfolio." And then the second section I wanted to point out is the detail section, which is in a section under development strategies, chapter 10, which is managing residential development. And there's several quotes here, including a better description of what it means to diversify Darien's housing portfolio. And you'll recognize a lot of the language. "Darien's population and housing needs have changed, changed over the years and it is anticipated that these preferences will continue to change in the future." "People have always sought housing that met their life stage and lifestyle needs, location, cost, size, amenities, et cetera, and Darien residents are no different." As the information on age composition and age related migration in the continued conditions and trends section of the P O C D indicates, Darien may not be gaining young people ages 20 to 35 because they cannot find housing that is affordable and meets their needs. And also, Darien may be losing older residents ages 55 and over because they can also cannot find housing that meets their needs, i.e. fewer maintenance responsibilities, et cetera. It goes on in that chapter to talk about housing needs of an aging population. To accommodate future housing needs, Darien may consider allowing additional multifamily housing units in appropriate places and configurations to address potential future needs. And it talks about housing that is more affordable. "Darien will seek to continue to encourage both affordable rental units and affordable ownership units in appropriate locations and appropriate densities." So the word appropriate locations comes up from time to time in the plan of conservation and development. And that is also addressed by virtue of section, the chapter 16 and the conclusion, the Future Land Use Plan. So the whole P O C D comes down to the Future Land Use Plan. And there's two maps that are included in the Future Land Use Plan, the Policy Area Map and the Future Land Use Plan Map. And the Parkland site, as well as all designed office zones, are indicated on both the Policy Area Map and the Future Land Use Plan. So I'll show you those maps now. This is the Policy Area Map. You see a number of properties indicated in orange on this map. Those properties, when you go to the legend, are listed as possible development opportunity areas. And that's defined, it's defined term in P O C D in the definition, is areas currently zoned for business, which should be retained for economic development and/or used to help meet the housing needs of the community. The regulations for these areas and the number and location of zoning districts should be reviewed, which is what we're doing here tonight with this application, and refined to ensure they will encourage the most appropriate development. The second map, of course, is the, is the Future Land Use Map, which I referred to, which is here. Again, properties in orange are listed in the legend as possible development opportunity areas. Defined term on the Future Land Use Map is areas that have been and are intended to be developed with retail, personal service, office and similar business uses as appropriate to each location and that may be used to help meet the housing needs of the community. So that's the review of how the plan and conservation development leads back in to the zoning regulation, which I'll go back through now. So we create section 462, which is site requirements. It needs to be in the designed office zone now. You can't go change something to the design office zone in the future and then include it. So it's just a few sites that we're considering and I'll show you those. And is served by public water and sewer at sufficient capacities to serve the development. This is kind of a no brainer. Makes sense. It's now information that is included in the text. 463, as we talked about, creates multifamily dwellings as a special permit use in the zone. So special permit standards, as the commission is well familiar with, bring in the whole conversation about is the lighting and the landscaping and the traffic and the drainage and the architecture appropriate for the site? And are we doing a good enough job with our buffers and how it fits in with the surrounding properties? Right? And that will be a part of those special permit applications. And there's a whole section of your considerations, section 1000, that gets into your regulatory oversight in that regard. 464, as we've talked about, mirrors the standards of the underlying designed office zone. You can have three stories today. You can have a certain amount of building coverage today. You can have certain setbacks today. We're not changing any of those things. And this is the section that refers back to that. That's where it's created. Now, there are a couple of additional standards. Additional standards is a section that exists in many zones in town for stuff that doesn't fit neatly into the reg. And these two things are actually proposed as a benefit to the park. One, we hope to be able to build a new stately ceremonial entrance to the nature preserve. Might look something like this. And we hope to provide that exclusive parking, both of which are indicated closer to the property boundary than parking or that pergola structure could be located under the existing zoning regulations. So we allow in this additional standard section, a pergola or similar feature to define the entrance to an open space reserve to be located in the rear yard. And we similarly allow that public parking to be within 20 feet of the use for that public parking. So those are a couple of very individualized, specific callouts. 466 is a very common sentence in the regs in that, to the extent not modified by this section, all of the other regs that are already in place today apply. In addition to that, there's two other places we go within the zoning regs. So that was all section 460 and new subsections 461 through 466. We're now jumping back into the designed office zone. The designed office zone allows 10% of a basement in an assisted living facility to be finished. Right now, your regs don't allow that in all cases and for basements necessarily in commercial zones when you've got a two story or a three story situation. So we're just striking the allowance that that's solely limited to senior living facilities so that a building like ours could have some space, 10% of the floor area of the story immediately above it, finished for common purposes. In our case, it would be a gym and a lobby. The, the next section that we're modifying, the town also has a pending text amendment to modify. And this is section 904. This is the parking requirements for multifamily dwelling units. The town, probably from days when multifamily dwelling units were more condo like, has a requirement of two and a half parking spaces for each dwelling unit. This might make sense for kind of a condo or a single family condo or a large townhouse like Kenza, but it doesn't really make sense for apartments. It is woefully overparked at two and a half per. And so we're proposing to reduce the parking standard from two and a half spaces per unit down to two spaces for each one bedroom unit and one and a half parking spaces for each studio apartment. Now, the, the town's own text amendment application, which will be heard on May 4th, goes much further than ours. This happens to be as far as we needed to go to provide 128 parking spaces on site. We still think we're overparked a little bit at a little more than two spaces per unit. But we were able to provide that, so we did. In addition, we provided in the application some information on the commercial office vacancy rates, both in town and in Fairfield County in general. And I think this is just to put the thought into context is that right, right now and likely, likely worsening in the future, which is a hypothetical projection, I realize, we have underutilized and vacant properties. And, and, and what are we going to do? What is the choice we can make to spur economic development for the town, which is good for everybody and good for the grand list? So that's in appendix C in the application. And then the last piece is, we've talked a lot about Parkland's Drive here as one of designed office zones. But this text amendment could theoretically be used by any, any of the designed office zone sites, which I'm trying to call up right now. So I have clips of each of these sites in appendix F of the application package as well as a spreadsheet summarizing all the acreage and square footages of each of the properties. This is your town G I S public access system available to everybody. I've got the zoning map loaded on it and we'll take a quick tour through the other designed office zones. So you can see them in pink on this overview. This is the one up by Rory's and Mason's. Recently remodeled and repositioned for office use. This is the D O zone here that houses Three Parklands and L C B. Also includes the half of the rest stop and I-95 and, and the, I think it's, I think it's, there's a Okings Highway, 80 Okings Highway, I think, 85 Okings Highway across I-95 is included in that D O zone. These are the two office complexes on Tokenique Road, just east of the highway. This is the designed office zone behind downtown, the Darien Dinner Theater is. Over here is Thorndale Circle and the office buildings associated with Thorndale Circle. There's a little municipal use overlay zone here for the police station and library. There's a medical office building down here on the Post Road, sandwiched between Post Road and Okings Highway across from the cemetery. And there's a kind of a straggler medical office building at the intersection of Nuroten and Hager. So this is where the designed office zone exists within town. I'm gonna lighten the transparency here of the zoning overlay just so we can take a quick look at each of those seven locations. So again, this is up by Rory's, Okings Highway and the Post Road. It is bordered to the rear by I-95. The south, there's the restaurant and Trader Joe's. West, a series of businesses along the Post Road. And the north is, of course, the Duchess and the on and off ramp at exit 13. So when you're considering the application, consider that someone may in the future decide that multifamily as a portion of this site or more might make sense. So this is a part of your consideration as a commission. Again, here is the one that we're a part of. This, of course, is Parkland's, one and three Parkland's. As you now understand, where it's positioned between 95, the open space and neighborhood at Fairmead Road. This is the 85 Old Kings Highway across from the Racket Club, across from a condo next to the ice rink and backed by 95. These are the two office parks on Tokenique Road. They back up to the railroad and the open space. On the west side, you've got the highway and the off ramp at exit 10. I'm sorry, exit 12. And there are, in this case, some single family homes to the east and south. This is, again, the area behind, kind of behind downtown, again, backs up to I-95. It's all along Old Kings Highway South, the old dinner theater here at the north and five or six properties going across there to the community gardens at the south. Three more to do. This is, and again, all these snippets are included in the application package. This is the office park at Thorndale Circle, backing up to 95. Post Road in the front, the businesses and car dealerships along the Post Road, library and the police station on the west side, some open space over here and a few residences off the west corner. This is the small D O strip that's across from Springdale Cemetery on the Post Road between the Post Road and Old Kings Highway. And then kind of the straggler ended up in the D O zone because I don't think it had anywhere else to live. And that's this office building at the corner of Nuroten and Hager. Technically, it includes Jake's Place as well, but that's owned by the state. So it's somewhat irrelevant what the zoning is there. But that gives you a picture of where else this might apply should someone choose to try to land the zone on one of these properties. So I think we've covered pretty clearly consistency with the plan of conservation and development. It's also consistency with many of the decisions that this commission has made over the last 20 years. Again, the reference document is that March 3rd, 2020 press release that outlines, you know, 20 some odd multifamily projects that were approved by this commission, many of which requiring the same process we're going through here, a text amendment to, to allow. And six of those of the same size or larger than what we're proposing for Three Parkland. So this is certainly consistent with the direction the town has mapped out, including consistent with plan of conservation development. We also think it's consistent with the site. The assisted living facility was approved as an asset to the town and that indicates the willingness of the town to, to thoughtfully redevelop some of these suburban office campuses that might otherwise be in decline and not contributing to the town in any helpful way. So I think that's about what I wanted to cover. We believe that these, that enabling these regulation changes will allow for the multifamily use to be applied to appropriate sites without increasing the building development potential of those sites while providing desired benefits to the town and provide opportunities for folks looking for different types of housing to find that housing in Darien. Yes, with that, I'll turn it over back to Bill. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Craig. Phil?
Thank you, Craig. Chairman, I'd note that we're well within our timeframe here, but if I talk too much longer, we're gonna be past it. And I don't wanna do that. I think if I said anything more right now about the actual application, I'd just be repeating what Craig pointed out in his presentation. You know, in a nutshell, we think that this You know, in a nutshell, we think that this application is a perfect example of thoughtful, careful planning. And, you know, we've run it through, through the reverse sort of end of the vessel, too. We've tried to think of what unintended adverse consequences could come as a result of this. And that's why we've looked so closely at all of the DO districts. And we can't think of any. We think this is all upside to give these zones another option to produce housing, including affordable inclusionary housing as an option use, without any further physical development rights, is a win-win in terms of achieving the goals and aspirations of the town plan of conservation and development, and for property owners, and for the grand list. We have built in with the, frankly, the insistence of your staff, the most controlling discretion-filled application and approval process that exists in zoning. You would have all the tools in your hand to deny any application that didn't fully conform to all of the regulations and considerations that a special permit and overlay district ought to have. There is really virtually nothing that you couldn't ask us. You could ask us about lighting, you could ask us about traffic, you could ask us about architecture, you could ask us about anything. And frankly, we'd be in a position of having to satisfactorily address that. You would have that possibility, I mean, that, that power. So we think it's the right tool. We're prepared to answer any questions you have and, and proceed on with this. We're very proud of this.
Thank you, Mr. Haddish. I appreciate that. I, I think it's a very thorough application. And I also think you and Craig did a very nice job explaining your book, and your book is very detailed. I appreciate that. I honestly really don't have that many questions. I do wanna make a, an overall observation. You know, this is something that, that's been around in, in the office building world for, I would say, at least 20 years. The first deal I did like this was on Wall Street in Manhattan, and I have not worked in Manhattan for 20 years. The, the office market in, in, regionally and statewide and nationally has changed. You do wanna be close to train stations, or you did prior to COVID. You wanna be close to walking to downtown. And a lot of office parks have changed from office to residential. It happens locally in Stanford and Norwalk. It happens in other towns like New Canaan. It happens regionally, it happens statewide, and it happens nationally. So I'm pleased to see that someone is putting forth this in, in our town, too. Like I said, I don't really have too many questions on the update. I get it. I understand it. I think it's well-written. I do like the fact that we have all this special permit belt and suspenders that we need for traffic and lighting and everything else. Yes, there's the, the parking ratios for offices less than, is, is greater than residential and residential's less than office. But what I would just really like to do is open up to the commissioners to see if they have any questions, because we did say that we would keep an hour to this. We're at 55 minutes now. If the commission has more questions, we can more than, more than welcome and go over. So does any commissioner have a question? Wanna start out first? You raise your hand and unmute your microphone. George is, is good. Larry Warble, Man of Reason, you're good. Jen Leahy gets it. Jim Rand is here. You get it? Is Karen Gately on? She's not here anyway.
I would say also, Steve, is if anybody thinks of any questions or has any comments or guidance, you know, after this meeting ends, they can certainly filter those comments through staff, and they'll come to us and we'll make sure to address them at, at future meetings.
Great.
So we'll continue this special meeting.
Can you speak louder?
So. Actually, Steve, I'm gonna come up with one question.
Sure, go ahead, Larry.
And, and excellent presentation. Thank you very much. It was very precise, clear and cut. So hence the reason not a lot of questions. Just one set, one question, though. Assuming that the current office building was fully utilized, wha- what is the number of people that'd be using it? Do you have that number?
The, the.
An estimate, I mean, I know every, people cram different numbers of people in an office, but.
So I'm here with Bob. What I will say is that the, the parking requirement for an office building like that is four per thousand, which I think puts us in the 140 required parking spaces range. That's pretty dense office environment for a suburban campus. But Bob said there'd easily be 100 people if that was fully stopped in the office suite scenario that it's done today.
So I'm sure that would be 140 parking spaces today?
That's what's currently required by your regs, yes.
The rule of thumb, the, well, let me see if I can help, too. The rule of thumb, Larry, for office space is pretty much, the building, the building today is, is about 35,000 feet. And the rule of thumb is about 250 square feet per person. So if you take, if you take two, if you take 35,000 divided by 250, that's 140 people. So you'd have 140 desks in there at that density. You know, that's, that accounts for hallways and all the other stuff, and that's hence the number of parking spaces. And it lands up being around the same number. If you have 60 apartments and there's two people in every single apartment, 60 times two is 120. You know, that's, that's the simple math.
No, I just, I just wanted to get a sense of how densely populated the current use is.
I'd do the same thing.
I think that gives me the answer. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd do the same thing. George, you're okay. Jen, you're okay. Jim, you're okay. Anything else want to add, Jeremy?
Nope. We'll continue to accept comments from the public between now and the next meeting. The next meeting on this application will be a special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Tuesday, May 18th at 7:30 PM.
These guys know that? The applicant knows that?
The applicant is aware of that. The commission members are aware of that. We, we asked the commission if they could make it. We do have a quorum that night. So it's gonna be a special meeting, and we'll try to devote a very good portion of that meeting to this application, where the neighbors and the public will get a, a chance to speak. But of course, we're still taking emails and letters, comments that way. So Tuesday, May 18th, 7:30 PM, and we'll publish the login information as it gets a little closer. So we'll continue it to that night.
Thank you. And the leader of the, the applicant is Craig or Bill or both? Doesn't matter?
I think we're, we're, we're pretty much teammates and partners in this endeavor at this point, so.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thanks very much. We appreciate your time.
Okay, the next item up is proposed.
We both together.
Oh, this one is, oh, okay, got it. I would read two items. They both relate to 26 Peach Hill Road. Proposed amendments to the Darien zoning regulations, COZR number 2-2021, put forth by Jeffrey Brown, 26 Peach Hill Road. Proposal to amend sections 331 and 405 of the Darien zoning regulations to allow temporary occupancy of an existing single-family dwelling as an accessory dwelling unit on lots greater or equal to 0.5 acres, while a new replacement single-family resident, single-family dwelling is being constructed on the same lot. Application will be subject to special permit review by the commission, and will require to conform with standards established with health and welfare. The text proposed. You gotta mute, buddy. For the, the full text of the proposed regulation, the memo is on file and available at Town Clerk's Office and the Planning and Zoning Office for inspection and online at www.dariencct.gov backslash PZC. The next application, we're gonna open them up simultaneously, is special permit application number 320, Jeffrey Brown, 26 Peach Hill Road. Request to allow continued temporary occupancy of an existing single-family dwelling on the property as an accessory dwelling unit in conference in performance with sections 331, 405, and 1,000 of the Darien zoning regulations, while a new replacement single-family dwelling is being constructed on the same lot. The 2.99 plus minus acre subject property is located on the west side of Peach Hill Road, approximately 725 feet of its intersection with Mansfield Avenue, and it's shown on Assessor Maps number 6, is lot 129 in the R2 zone. Now, we saw this one like six months ago or a year ago?
Right. The commission has previously reviewed a proposal for this 26 Peach Hill Road property for a regrading application. The commission approved that application at that time. And you may recall that the applicant had noted that they were desirous of living on the property while their house was being constructed, but that request was denied by the zoning board of appeals. So they are back before you this evening for two aspects. One is to modify the zoning regulations to allow, on a temporary basis, two houses on one lot, in a case where you're in the middle, you're living on the property while your new house is being constructed. And at the same time, they're asking to not only modify the zoning regulations to allow such, but they're submitting the special permit, which would allow them to proceed. So unlike the first application you heard tonight, this, this group is both applications at once, because they're so intertwined, and there's not a lot of subsequent related issues. It's much more straightforward than the prior application. What I, because it was a zoning change, we had to refer this to West Cobb, the Western Connecticut Council of Governments. They sent an email dated March 26, 2021. The opinion of West Cobb staff is that the proposal is of local interest and with minimal intermunicipal impact. Therefore, it is not being forwarded to adjacent municipalities. The regional is making no comment. We also, because it's a town zoning regulation that would affect every property in town, including those on the coastline, we refer it to the state of Connecticut, DEEP. They sent an email dated April 16, 2021, a few pages long. But the gist of their email is, instead of reading the whole thing, basically says, we recommend that if post-text change amendments are made to these sections of the regulations, then the commission should also include language which explicitly and unambiguously excludes applicability to those lots or parcels partially entirely located within FEMA-designated A and V special flood hazard zones. They, they do not wish to have text amendments which could place additional property in life in danger of flooding. So I wanted to mention that to the commission. Attorney Wilder Gleason is here on behalf of the applicant, and he's gonna take it from here.
Thank you, Jeremy.
There he is. Welcome, sir.
Hi, good evening. So I represent Jeff Brown, who's on the screen with you all. And he and Doug DeVesta and Neil Houck, his architect, presented to you. And you've already approved the development of this house on this lot. And because Jeff bought this property after coming from Japan, and the reason he bought it and moved to Darien, and I, I've got his permission to share this, because it's quite personal. But he and his wife have a special needs child. And the services that Darien provides were important to them. And they bought this property, and before they purchased this three-acre parcel with a small house on it, they consulted with the planning and zoning staff and were advised that it might be possible to get a variance so that they could live in the house while a new house was constructed, that variances had been granted in the past. And it was important to Jeff's family that that occur because changes. And it changes to, his child needs stability. He needs to be routine, have routine. And moving out for a year and coming back would disturb that routine. So when the planning and, when the zoning board of appeals denied their application to live in this little house on this three-acre lot while a new house is being built, Jeff had consulted me after this, and he decided he wanted to look to see if he could find another house so there'd be only one move as opposed to two. He just didn't want to move off-site, rent for a year and come back. And in the pandemic, it's really hard to find new housing. And after several months, he came back to me and said, let's see if we can get a text amendment. So I worked with Jeremy and Fred and Dave Keating to draft something that they would support. Because this is a problem I've seen over the years. It's not a big recurring problem, but it's one that occurs. And it's never made sense to me why an owner of a larger lot is not permitted to build a new house while living in the existing house. And it's gotta be owner in the house while his new house is being constructed. I mean, I don't wanna, so Jeremy and Fred and Dave looked at this, and we crafted something that I think gives you a lot of tools and establishes reasonable standards to allow this to happen. And so for that reason, I'd like to just share my screen with you if I can. And let me see how I do that. Brad? Can you all see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so, let me just make sure that that's. Okay, so.
I actually need to bring up the, the PDF or the PowerPoint presentation. You can just see your blue desktop screen.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. But I, I've got it up. I have it on my screen. All right, Fred, I don't, I hit share screen.
Do you have dual screens, Wouter?
Yeah, I do, but this is all on one.
Just say it on the main screen.
Okay, let me go down. Let me just bring that down to the main screen. Okay, I'll see if I can do that. A sec. Are you seeing it now?
No, no, it must be on your other screen.
Let me try this.
There you go. Yeah.
All right, all right, great.
Just walk in the room.
The glitch. I didn't realize that created. Thank you, Doug. All right, so the genesis for this is really that I've seen this occur over a number of years, and I've probably had 10 or 12 clients that would have loved to be able to do it. I've, I've, I've had several variances that were granted, but the planning and the zoning board of appeals is not allowing it anymore. So basically, what we're looking at is owners of larger lots can't build a new dwelling while living in an existing dwelling on the lot, as prohibited sections 331 and 405. And we did get variances initially, but the last time, there's been 12 ZBA applications for this in the, since 2002, and three were granted. And the last one that was granted was in 2013, eight years ago. And the rationale is that you need a hardship in order to justify granting a variance. And the hardship that ZBA sees here is really an economic hardship. I save money by living in my house and not having to rent. And under case law, economic hardship does not qualify as a legal hardship. And so the ZBA has been applying the standard. And so the ZBA has been applying the standard more rigorously recently. And you just aren't going to get a variance. So to address this concern, it's appropriate to amend the regulations. This is a copy of a site plan that was presented to the ZBA. And it shows the existing configuration of the main portion of the property. It's a rear lot that has a long driveway that it shares with the neighbor to the south, basically. North is on the top of this picture. And you'll see the existing house is colored in green. And the existing driveway that serves the house is adjacent to that green house. And the driveway that is shared that leads to the neighbor's house immediately south of us is curves and hooks back from our property onto the neighbor's property. The new house that's proposed is colored in yellow. And the main house is left and there's a three car garage that's connected by an underground passageway that's to the right. And the parking space or driveways for the new house are colored in pink. And this is probably two plus acres that we have here. And you can see that you've got a lot of space that's available. And the construction is separated. The yellow is separated from the current house. And so that, and there's also a topographic separation because the property rises as you go to the left or the east to the west. And you'll see from pictures that I provide in the special permit presentation that the existing house is several feet, probably 10 feet lower, eight to 10 feet lower than where the current house, the new house is proposed to be located. So there's lots of room and it makes a lot of sense to allow it. So section 331 is what we're seeking to amend. And that defines that every building must have a lot on it. It must be located on a lot. And there's the text says, there shall not, the second sentence says, there shall be not more than one main building and its accessory buildings on one lot. Except, and then we inserted, when approved pursuant to subsection 405H or for non residential buildings and multifamily dwellings in zones where such uses are permitted. So we're allowing an exception here to allow two main buildings on a single lot when it's approved by subsection 405H of the regulations. And this is your zoning regulations that is, if you look at it now, the changes are in bold here. And basically, we've added a new section 405H. And section 405 is accessory uses requiring special permits. So this is like the home occupation, the home office, things like that that require special permit approval are included in this. So we're doing a new one. And it says in any residential zone, a new single family dwelling. Now, in the text that I submitted, I use residence. But I realized after we submitted that dwelling is the appropriate language in the zoning regs. So I converted that in this presentation to dwelling and italicized it throughout because I think that's where you want to go. So in any residential zone, a new single family dwelling may be erected on a lot while the current owner resides in an existing dwelling on said lot. So right away, we've limited it. If you're renting the property, you can't do this. You have to be an owner. You have to be living in the existing dwelling. And you have to be building your new house on the lot. So and then we worked with staff to develop a series of conditions that have to be satisfied that address safety, security and construction impact concerns. First of all, the lot can't has, is not less than one half an acre. So this would be apply in the R2, R1 and R1 half zones. The new dwelling shall comply with all area and bulk requirements. If you need a variance, you can't have your new house constructed while you're living in the existing house on the lot. We turn to item three. Construction of the new dwelling shall be confined to an area on the lot, which we define as the construction site. And that must provide safe access to and from the existing dwelling and the construction site. So if we don't have safety concerns or access, then you turn it down. And the burdens on the applicant to establish that. The construction site, that defined area on the lot that is for the construction of the new residence is to provide adequate space to store construction materials and the stockpile area for excavated materials if necessary. The combined building coverage of the existing buildings, that's the existing lot plus the new buildings, the new house and garage, and in this case, the pool, shall not exceed 35% while the new dwelling and its related structures are under construction. So that we have a 20% maximum building coverage. We're allowing it to go up to 35%. And then the existing dwelling would come down. And the existing dwelling shall have its kitchen and cooking facilities removed within 30 days after a COO is issued for the new dwelling. And item A, any buildings required to be removed by the commission approval pursuant to the subparagraph shall be removed within 75 days after issuance of the occupancy for the new dwelling, unless extensions are granted by the commission. So you move into your new house, typically be under a temporary certificate of occupancy. You have to take the kitchen of the old house out within 30 days and you have to demolish the old house within 75 days, unless the commission has made other arrangements. There may be a situation where you want to convert that house into a guest sleeping quarters, which the commission would have authority to grant. But you you have flexibility and it's your decision as to whether the buildings come down. We've given you, in addition, you have all of the special permit conditions, impact on neighbors, traffic, all those safety concerns that you have under special permit regulations, section 1005, that you can apply in order to address neighbor concerns. And so, and the other thing is with the special permit requirement, there must be a public hearing and neighbors receive notice and have an opportunity to comment. So this is not something that's going to happen a lot. It's like it's happened 12 times in the last 18, 19 years. It's limited to the R1, R2, R1 and R1 fifth acres. We have a bunch of conditions that are relevant to your decision about impact on neighbors specific to this type of thing. And we think those are appropriate. We believe they're consistent with the plan of conservation and development, which is about maintaining the residential character. And we recognizing your plan of conservation and development that prevailing development pattern is predominantly single family development. That's what we're doing here. And this provides people in the R1 half an ability to perhaps in their house while they're building, there are some cost savings for applicants. But in this case, that's not the primary concern. The primary concern driving this is the need for stability for a child with special needs. That's what's been driving this position and Jeff's efforts to make sure this happens. So we think there's sound reasons for doing this. In fact, I'm a little surprised that it hasn't been addressed in the in the past. We don't think it's a big change. We give you all the tools to say no because of the special permit requirements. Opportunity to be heard. I am perfectly fine, and I think Jeff is fine too, with a condition that says it would exclude properties that are in high hazard flood zones from the provisions of this regulation. And that could be easily crafted to just say, if we could add an item nine that says the provisions of this section 405H shall not apply to any lot located within a AE or velocity flood zone. Happy to work with staff to make sure that gets implemented. But that is our, you know, brief presentation about what what we're looking for and why. And we believe it's consistent with the plan of conservation.
Doug, you gotta mute yourself.
Muted?
Well, you're unmuted. Now you're muted. There you go. I'm sorry, Wilder, you you did a good job, but are you done?
I'm not. So if there's any, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. No, I get it. Yes, we've talked about this for a number of years. I've been on the commission and I think maybe you're on ZBA when they got denied. This does kind of fall into the ADU category, which we have yet to address here in Darien. It is on our long term plan to do, I think, I don't know, maybe maybe make it July, June, July, August later.
September, October.
September, October. But I I know your applicant or your, yeah, your applicant put this forth. We want to see what we can do with this text now. My biggest concern is, is the, is the zoning district. You're in R1 zone, which doesn't, which is, which is fine. I mean, I'm okay with R2 zones. Then my my issue that I have personally is, is the half acre provision. It, I don't think, you know, my my house is on a third of an acre. I don't know if you really could fit two houses on a half an acre. So I would, I know you guys talked about it collectively in staff time because I was, you know, part of some of these ideas. You're not less than one half acre. Does that, is that something that you're wedded to?
Absolutely not. I mean, obviously, I have to have it for R1. And, you know, if it works for R1 and R2 and someone wants to come back and say, let's see if we can apply it to R1 half, we're fine if you want to delete the point five and make that a 1.0 acre requirement.
Okay, thank you. That takes that question off the table.
Although I I don't feel the same way this, if we're, if we're commenting.
No, no, we're definitely coming. It's, you know, I'm going to speak first and then you can speak two seconds. I got it. That's fine. All right, I don't really, I mean, I get it. I get it 100%. You did a good job explaining it. I understand the background and all the history, which is fine. That's my, that's my only issue. So with that said, I would open up to the commissioners. Jen, you want to go first since you chimed in?
Sure. Um, I don't have much to add except that, so I think that I've experienced this both with my family who did build a house in Old Greenwich on, it was actually a little less than a half acre and it worked perfectly fine. And they had children and I think, you know, I think for anyone, right? No, none of us like to move. I think that it's your land and if I've seen it done safely and when they were able to tear that down, they moved out and then when the new house, the CEO, they moved in. So there are still some disruption, but certainly a lot less and much less costly. And especially in an age where we're talking about just housing and affordability, I don't think this is, this is actually a smart thing to do everywhere. I just think it's a smart thing to do. It's very expensive to rent right now. And I think that it's cross prohibitive for a family to have to rent. Obviously, just like anything else, when we look at, you know, making an accessory dwelling, you're not available. It all costs money. So if a house needs to, if they want to build a new house, things cost money regardless of how much money it is. So I feel like especially right now, this makes a lot of sense.
Can I ask, Jen, you you seem to be, I mean, we're agnostic as to half acre. It was suggested that that would be appropriate. And I just haven't analyzed a half acre lot to see whether it really works. You have personal experience that it did with your family's home, which was about a half acre in Greenwich, right? Old Greenwich?
Old Greenwich, yeah. It did work in that instance. And there was a, and the house is sort of elevated and there wasn't even a house below it. Yeah, it totally worked. I think, you know, obviously, there's ways to do this and I'm not, I'll let the building department kind of work through the safety issues of it. But at the back of the house is all boarded up and it was perfectly fine.
Yeah. So, you know, Steve, maybe we want to revisit that half acre because we did suggest it and we'll just see where you guys go. Obviously, that's a commission decision. We would, you know, we're happy either way, but we clearly want the one acre zone to have that in the two acre zone. So. Anyone else?
Thank you. Thank you, Larry. Larry Warble, go right ahead, sir.
Yeah, no, I'm just going to chime in that I I I support this proposal. It says someone's own property to do that. I mean, they make someone have to move out of their house just while another one is being built on the same property seems, you know, kind of absurd to me. I mean, it's, I put it in this context, if the town can do it for Ox Ridge, then people living in the town should be able to do it for their house, their own property. So if we can do it for Ox Ridge, our residents should be able to do it for themselves. And so I don't have any data on half acre versus acre. I feel fine with half acre.
You're right, because we did it on, excuse me, we did it on Ox Ridge, we did it on the high school, you know, those two can go, the only difference there is we're talking some of that's 10 acres for something that's a half an acre. It's the world of difference.
I think a house might be smaller than a school.
I'm sorry. It's gonna be a big.
I don't know having a house you want to build, but I think it's probably smaller than the school.
Agreed. George Riley, your mic is on?
Sure, let me chime in. I I think the smaller area can work a half acre because there is carefully crafted language here about providing safe access to and from the existing dwelling and the construction site. So if you can accomplish that on a half acre, for the sake of the powers that be, then then that that works for me. My one kind of out of left field thought occurred to me, are we covering the prospect that someone might buy a property, tear down the existing dwelling, move in something modular on a temporary basis and then start building? And would we be comfortable with that? I don't want to call it a trailer necessarily, but, you know, I suppose you could move in a trailer, take the wheels off and otherwise satisfy whatever the CEO requirements are for that. Is that be a pretty economical way to to do it, I suppose? And I, but I don't think we'd, we'd really like that. Wilder, do you think that's covered?
I, off the top of the head, I don't. But it's got to be an existing dwelling. So if someone tears down an existing dwelling and builds a prefab that's a piece of junk, you don't regulate that now. You know, if they bring in a trailer, I I can't recall anyone doing this in my 40 years of practicing.
It happens in Vermont, in rural areas. I mean, I was wanting to do it in Vermont, buy five acres, put a trailer on it and then live in the trailer and then build a house at the same time. I mean, I get it, question. It's a good point.
Be the existing dwelling at that point.
Correct. The resident existing dwelling in six months.
I got it. But why wouldn't you just live in the existing dwelling? Like, why would you go to it?
Why would you tear something down?
Why would you tear it down just to have something temporary? I mean, I guess the site plan building might overlap with.
You know, a modular, it could be smaller. You could craft it more specifically, I guess, to the site.
I'm personally not worried about it.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, you know, if if it's up there for a year, it's got to come down once the new house is done and you're going to approve it. So, you know, if a guy comes in and builds a. So, uh, you know, um, if a guy comes in and builds a temporary modular house that's a piece of junk and zoning and, and you're, you, you can't prevent them from doing that. The fact that it's there for a year because he is building something new, you guys can make him get rid of it as a condition. Otherwise he has to move out and build his new house. So, um,
Yeah, I, I, I hear you. I, uh, was just thinking if there might be some language for this proposed reg, but I could be convinced it's not necessary.
Yeah. I mean, it's a good point, George, but I, and I didn't address it specifically, but.
It's like to come out of left field every now.
Yeah, well, you know.
You guys had a sentence of, because we could think about it. Jim, ready? Any questions, comments on this one?
Uh, I, uh, walked the property in question at the time of the original application. And I had, uh, the good fortune to, uh, run into Mr. Brown and he was kind enough to share with me his rather unique, um, family situation. And I was, I, I was in favor of the original application. I couldn't understand why it didn't make a great deal of sense. Particularly when within a half a mile of me or two or three houses that were built right alongside existing homes, which, uh, remain on the lot. I don't know whether they have had their kitchens removed. I don't even know if they're occupied. But, uh, uh, for whatever reason, the owners elected not to tear down the original house just to build a much bigger and more modern house, um, uh, uh, let's say nearby. Um, so I, I think that, um, that doing what Mr. Brown has asked, uh, is, um, eminently reasonable. My only, uh, question, which I, is, is ill-formed because I don't know enough about the rules and regulations is, is, uh, or are unintended consequences. And if, if, uh, staff or legal advice suggests that, that the, that the chance of unattended, unintended consequences is rare, I certainly have no objection to doing this.
Oh, good. Not speak. Go ahead.
Jim, Jeremy Ginsburg, planning and zoning director for the record. Jim, I think that's a good point on the unintended consequences. And I think that's why when we spoke to Wilder, I think having everything done by special permit was an important aspect of this proposal because the commission will look at each type of proposal. So you would have to approve it, uh, where someone wants to build two houses on one lot on a temporary basis. The commission would then look at it relative to all the typical aspects being set aside in the zoning regulation. So you're right, Jim. It gives the commission a look at something that they might not have had a chance to review. Uh, so from that standpoint, that was an essential part of what Wilder's putting forth.
Thanks, Jim. Right now, we're just still talking about this. We're just talking about the tax amendment right now. You know, and, and yes, you got it to the, to the, um, site plan, which is fine. But this is really a text memo. I got, I heard from everybody, right? I, I checked it away and Karen's not here. Anything you want to add, Jeremy? No? Because it's got, we have the special permit piece to it. Right? We're gonna review it again for ADUs. It falls in that category. Okay. Anything else, Wilder, on this piece of the puzzle?
No.
The, the only thing I wanted to make sure, and I want to, I want to overlay this tax amendment with any thoughts we may have that's going to come up in time for the, um, ADU discussion, which right now we're in the process of studying other people, um, other towns for that. And that's why that's not coming up on May fourth.
I, I, I would hate to have this one held up, um, significantly while you complete your review of that. Because I think this problem is one that I have seen in my practice. I mean, it pops up every couple of years and I, I always hate telling clients, you know, and now I'm telling them, don't go for the variance because I'm stealing your money if I take it to apply because I can't justify the hardship. I, and they're turning it down. And it just seems unconscionable almost that you force people to move out, spend rental money and come back. It just doesn't make sense from a policy point of view. And I think, uh, I, you all pointed out the schools and other things. I hope that you can see your way to making this happen sooner rather than later.
I mean, it's, um, I mean, we have 60 days to look at it. I don't know if we need, need 60 days. If we're not, we're definitely not compared with ADUs in 60 days. Um, I, I get it. I get your point. I hear you.
And, and I certainly, you, obviously you don't want this to affect what you do there, but take your time to consider it. And, and hopefully we'll get a decision soon because Jeff has been waiting much longer than he hopes to start construction. So.
I know. Okay. Any neighbor comments on this?
Yes, uh, we emailed to the commission and email from a, a next door neighbor, Mr. Hardy. His emails dated Monday, April 26th at 9:27 a.m. We posted that to the website, included a hard copy in the file and have emailed that to commission members, with, uh, Mr. Hardy's concerns. That's part of the record in this matter.
Because that, that relates to the text amendment is we.
He, he addressed both the text amendment and the, um, special permit. His comments that were substantive were more addressed to the special permit. Um, I'm happy to try and address them in both, uh, uh, but I would prefer not to have to repeat myself.
No, understood. Yeah. Because he's putting the two together, which everybody is.
Yeah. So, I mean, on this one, uh, why don't you just, let's close this one and I'll address in the subsequent one. Because I think his comments were more sites plan, uh, specific as opposed to policy.
Let me go, go to the general public then, right?
Yep, yep, yep.
So relative to the general public, does anyone from the general public want to speak to this text amendment change application? If you do, you have to turn your, um, light on, your screen on and your mic on. Uh, there's nobody in the chat box. There's, there's a question in there. Does that mean anything? There's a one? What does that mean?
Nope.
Okay. So you want to close this hearing?
Do you want to close it or leave it open as part of the subsequent discussion on the special permit?
I'm gonna leave it open so the information in the special permit can be considered in the zone change. And then my comments will be addressed to the neighbors' comments in both hearings. If that's okay. Would that be all right?
That's fine by me. That's why you guys are lawyers. Okay. So we're gonna switch over to the special permit application number, uh, where are we? Special application number 420. Go ahead, Wilder.
Okay, great. Um, again, uh, I will try and share my screen. Let me get it down where it belongs. Just a sec.
Should we open the, close both to go?
All right. Are you getting it?
Yes, we see it, Wilder.
Okay. You're getting the full thing or just, uh, um, okay. So.
Maximize it on the screen.
All right. Just a sec. Uh, TTTTT. I don't know why. Oh, I know why. There it is. Is that good?
You got it. Good job.
All right. Thank you. Um, Luddites are educable. So, um, this is our application for a special permit. And, um, again, we're allowing temporary occupancy of an existing dwelling pursuant to the amendments that we just proposed with whatever tweaks you want to put in them, um, while a new dwelling is constructed at 26 Peach Hill Road. As you guys noted earlier, you already approved this in LFR 487 in October of last year. The property is 2.99 acres. There's an existing house located close to wetlands and below the elevation of the proposed residence. There's a large undeveloped portion of the property. And that's where we proposed to put the house as we showed on this sketch, which I summarized earlier. I took some photos last week and frankly, it is just gorgeous property. I mean, this is the western and northern area looking towards the, uh, the neighbors on the west side and on the north. And I'm gonna scan as we go through the photographs. I'm scanning left to right. So, um, this is, um, to the right, you can see the existing residence. It's downhill five or six feet from where that persythia is and those trees. That is about the edge of where the garage would be in the new house. It's about 23 feet from the screen porch, which is just over the car, the hood of the car there. So now we're looking, we're swinging further, uh, to the right. You can see the house and how the driveway comes up. Um, we're still on Jeff Brown's property here. The driveway actually leads up to the neighbor, Mr. Hardy, who wrote the email objecting to this. And the next picture goes down further and you can see how the driveway swoops to the left, uh, to the right as we swing down. Then I'm moving down the hill and I'm looking back up at the car. And you can see the substantial grade change there. It's much higher up by the car. And you can see where the persythia is in the edge of the house that it drops. And the grade is more visible in this picture. Uh, and then we get to the driveway for the existing residence, which leads to a, a garage underneath the house, the existing house. And this area to the right of the driveway is where the construction parking is supposed to be. And because of the neighbors' concerns, I asked Doug DeVest to get involved. And to Doug, I'd like you to take over and present at this point. Um, I'll stop sharing my screen if I can. And, um, if you could take over and do your, uh, because you did, we modified the site plan in certain respects.
Sure.
At least on the comments of Mr. Hardy, the neighbor. And by the way, well, we'll, we'll get to it once Doug talks about the changes.
Okay. For the record, Doug, the best professional engineer represents the applicant. The modified, as Wilder talked, we modified the, um, site plan relative to the comments from our neighbor to the south there. Uh, they made, one of the, one of the issues he had was we had a stockpile area, um, in this general area where my cursor is. So what we did is we moved it further to the, to the north, um, inside the building setback. So now we're, uh, 50 feet from the property line with our stockpile area plus the distance from his house, um, and his garage, uh, parking area to his house. So again, it's much further away from his property. Uh, what I'm showing here is the, uh, the red line you're seeing on the screen. Anything to the east of that is wetlands. And then what we provided here was a, the red line I'm highlighting would be the construction area up and around the property. Uh, that's approximately 42,000 square, about 42,500, uh, 42,500 square feet of construction area for the new residence. What I want to show here is that this is the driveway coming in from Peach, uh, Peach Hill, coming up into the existing house, uh, then continuing further to the, uh, north and west, going into the two driveways, one for the detached garage and one for the front of the house courtyard. So for construction purposes, uh, for safety, again, we're providing, um, parking along the eastly side of the driveway. Then once the house, um, is, the foundation is in and backfilled, uh, this park, this area in front of the house can be used as parking and also the area, um, adjacent to the detached garage. Um, as Wilder mentioned, the glue is the existing house. Um, we are providing from the detached garage, we're about 23 feet to the screen porch and about 38 feet, um, to the actual base of that, of the existing house for the detached garage. The main house that the proposed, the proposed house is over 90 feet away from the existing house and the proposed house. So there's plenty of distance and safety, uh, for the construction of the main, main house going on. And talking about the, um, how much, how much area is left over? Um, so it's one of the questions Mr. Harding had is about, um, you know, there's, there's not enough room for the existing house whilst being constructed. So we looked at the property, um, the property is a little over, um, let me get the full drawing up here. This is the, this is the full property. So right here is Peach, is Peach, uh, Hill Road. Here's the common driveway coming up. Um, this is the driveway leading to the existing house and then the greenest area is the construction area. So this whole property is around 130,000, uh, square feet area. Uh, if we take away the access area, which is about 10,000 square feet to approximately about here, take away the wetlands areas around 40,000 square feet, we're left with about 70, almost 80,000 square feet of, uh, area to, for construction. Um, and we've mentioned this greenish area here is about 42,000, uh, square feet of construction area. So if we take that, um, what's left over, we have about 37,000 square feet of area for the existing house. Um, and we feel that's plenty of space for the existing house during the construction of the, of the new house itself. We also talked about the, the, part of the text amendment was the, um, overall, uh, coverage. The existing house based on the survey map is around 2% of the acreage of the property itself. Their proposed house, the pool and the spot area is around 3.6. So they have a total of about 5.6%, um, percent of, uh, combined coverage and in the, based on the text amendment that Wilder's asking for, we're well under the 35% requirements, even under the 20% requirements, uh, for the, um, for that, that text amendment change. There's a question from the neighbor regarding, uh, the driveway. He's calling the driveway, um, over a thousand feet long, which, okay, that's, we'll agree with that. Um, he's saying it's about 10 feet wide. Well, what I did is I went through and I measured it. So from the, this dash line to the dash line, which is the edge of the pavement based on the survey map. As you can see, by the entrance by, um, Peach Hill is around 14, 2, 13, 7, 11, 9 is about the small, the shortest area. Here's 11, 4. So it goes down to 11, 4, but then here, got a little bit of bulge in here, goes around almost 15, 15 feet wide. And then it stays around 12 most of the way up the hill itself until you get, um, past the existing driveway, which is right here. Uh, there's a small area that goes down to 11, 4, but then it goes back up to around 12, 13 to 15 feet. So really we feel that the driveway is safe enough, um, for, uh, construction vehicles and, uh, the passing and repassing of, um, Mr. Brown's family leaving the site and also the Harding leaving the site. And if, at some point there's construction activity going on, um, and two vehicles are coming, there is an area, uh, to pull over and two vehicles could pass within this bulge area of the, of the driveway itself. Uh, we do feel that, um, that the, that there's plenty of room for staging. Um, as we talked about, this area south of the, uh, existing house could be used for staging of, uh, construction material. Uh, we do have a stockpile area again to the north and to the, of the, and west of the, um, proposed house. There's also another storage area for a stockpile area on the north side of the property. So we feel that there's enough area for stockpiling of material during construction. Um, and also film material that's being excavated from the foundation of the house. Um, and any kind of, any kind of, uh, excavation for their, for the proposed driveways. I think that covers almost everything, um, that was brought up by the, um, neighbor. Um, again, this project, you've, you've seen this, you've seen the applications. I'm not gonna go through a lot of detail of the actual site plan, um, that you've, that you've seen, um, and approved, uh, back in October. While that cover everything, you want to cover anything else or not?
I'm happy to add some others, um, while you've got it there. Um, uh, well, you know what? Yeah, the, um, let me just see. Doug, it's interesting because the construction site that you've defined is about 40,000 square feet for, uh, if you expanded that to the property line, it would be well over an acre. Because you're keeping it, you know, 40 feet or 35 feet. Because you're keeping it, you know, 40 feet or 35 feet from that western boundary. And so we have basically an acre for that primary house. And that's not even counting the parking along the driveway that's serving the existing residents.
Well, that's my point, Elliot. I don't mean to interrupt. That's why I thought a half an acre was too small.
Well.
I mean, your construction site is 40,000, your construction is 42,000 feet and your house is 33,000 feet.
This is an 8,000 square foot house on a half acre lot. You're not going to have anything close to that. We have a pool, we have other amenities. So given the size of the lot, we've basically got an undeveloped acre that we can use for construction and do so providing safe access to and from the house that exists, as well as the construction site and separating them appropriately. So Doug is calling for construction fencing, the orange construction fencing, to define the construction site. We have silk fences, soil and erosion controls around the top, the stockpile areas. So we're addressing that and we've talked about construction parking. So I think we've addressed, and Doug, I think, you know what? I'll just share my screen at this point and I'll walk through how I think we comply with the amended regs, assuming you guys choose to adopt that.
Let me ask, let me ask a question first of Doug on special permit item here. This driveway issue, where it might be narrow, when I read Hardy's letter and whatnot, and he's not here tonight. But if you look at this picture, which is one of Wilder's exhibits. You know, in this old front lawn, do we own this piece of grass? If necessary to create access, could we do a pull off area here? So you can, your truck can move to the side while someone else is coming out.
Which picture are you talking about?
It's the one that's the house.
Yeah, yeah, that, that area, well, you can see, Doug, you can show where the entrance is. The, where the driveway splits to serve us and then go up the hill, a portion of that lawn is on the Hardy property. Okay?
That's where Doug's hand is right now. I'm just saying, if, if you needed to, could a truck pull into that grassy area? And it'd be on Brown's property, not on Hardy's property?
We could make it not there, but further up we could, or certainly to the left of the main driveway serving the residence. Or approach it from uphill.
That's what I'm.
Driveway and turn, turn off. We've got lots of room to do that, Steve. There's no problem. And that's where that big curve is, is the existing driveway that we would keep clear for Hardy to get by.
Right. That's what I'm after.
We've got plenty of room to put construction parking if we need to.
So if it's, the answer is if you need to, six months when the thing's under construction, since it's going to be under construction for a year and a half. If it becomes an issue, you can throw down some item four and grab it.
And also Steve, you have this area in here too, in front of the house, this parking court for park, for construction parking and also in front of the garage here. So we have this, this parking, this parking, this parking area.
If Hardy's coming out of his house and the construction's coming in the same exact time, that's where the 10-foot driveway issue comes in. So if you have a pull off area for the construction, Hardy can get past and they can.
Right. You can pull, you can pull right into here for the time being and then continue on up.
Exactly. If Hardy rushed, you know, rushed into work and rushed into the train, rushed into church and.
I mean, the interesting thing, Steve, is Hardy did not object at the zoning board of appeals application, nor did he object at your planning and zoning approval application. And now that we're seeking a zone change, he's objecting. And the issues, you're going to have better control for him with your analysis of this. I mean, we will do what's appropriate here.
I get it.
So if I could just share my screen briefly, I want to walk through. Let me see. Okay, so. Yeah, a portion of this property, that's a triangle is on the Hardy property. But then you can see the stake that's to the right of the driveway as you go up. There's a little stake, that is the property line, just to the right of the driveway. And it goes across this green space. But in summary, that was the, that's sort of the construction area and Doug explained this. We have three acres, one and a half acres required. We eat, we comply with area and bulk. The construction site is defined in Doug's plans and it provides the safe access. We've got storage for construction and excavated materials. We provide construction parking. Our building coverage, Doug says is five. I thought it was seven when set 35 is allowed. And we'll take care of removing the kitchen and cooking facility and demolishing the new house within whatever timelines you think are reasonable, but we suggest 30 in 75 days. So we think we meet the spirit and intent of the regs. And our proposal meets section 105. We're in harmony with already developed, orderly development of the R2 zone. We won't discourage development or use of adjacent land or buildings. We're not going to impair their value. We accomplish this objectives of site plan approval. We won't affect safety in the streets or increase traffic. And our driveway and rights of way will accommodate the traffic from the proposal. So I know Mr., I was, I have to tell you, I think Jeff Brown was really disheartened to hear his neighbor objecting after several opportunities to object and after speaking with him personally. It just has come out of left field. And we don't think that his comments about site construction and development and risks and insurance are based upon fact. Any contractor would be happy to have this job. They can get insurance for it. OSHA is not about to close the site down as he suggests would happen in a heartbeat because of safety concerns. I mean, those are overblown claim, claims that are not based on fact. So we feel that we have addressed his concerns to the extent that they're relevant. And we feel that you are armed with tools to provide for safety of the neighborhood and feel this should be approved. And we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Wilder. So just to go back and commissioners, I heard your, your comments earlier and I get it, we're out to have acres. But if I'm looking on this thing, it says complies two pages earlier, Wilder. But what I was suggesting earlier was changing that from 2.9 acres when 1.0 acres is required. And the reason why I keep harping on that is because Doug's construction area for the new house is 40,000 feet and the old house is 30,000 feet. That's even bigger than a half an acre, but we can debate that at another time when we review the application. What else? In the part about the driveway, where you put that at the end, streets and driveways will accommodate traffic from proposal. If it comes to push, comes to shove, six months from now or a year from now, the driveway is a problem. You have an area where you can put in crushed stone to make a temporary pull off, but right, that's what we're talking about.
We can do that. And, and frankly, if that becomes a problem, we would be more than willing to widen that bulge and firm up the ground adjacent to it if it requires us to seek EPC approval. We had some preliminary discussions with commission staff about it and they seemed to think it was fine. But we didn't want that mandated. And as part of this, we think we're fine with it. And frankly, nobody raised this as an issue when you heard this last October and approved it. So.
Right. I get it. I know, I know, I know. I got it. Okay, understood. Do any commissioners have any additional questions on this special permit application? George Riley, your line is on?
Two quick things on my mind. One, I assume that Wilder wouldn't be here if he hadn't satisfied the notice issue that Mr. Hardy wrote. But I understand that given COVID, you can't get a signed green card nowadays. So.
Well, we, I did address that with Jeremy. We always use certificates of mailing. We mail individual by regular mail. We are not required by your regulations to send them certified. People weren't picking up certified mail. They thought it was bill collectors. So years ago, the notice provision, what provision was, allowed us to just mail it. And although certificates of mailing are waived by the governor's executive orders, we provided the commission staff with executive, with certificates of mailing. And Jeremy's staff confirmed that Cindy Hardy, the owner of 22 Peach Hill, 5 Peach Hill, was received notice. So.
Good. Okay. Just good to have on the record.
Yep. Thank you for asking.
The other quick question, is there going to be a fence between the existing building and the construction site?
Yes. Yes, there will be orange construction fencing. And if it seems appropriate, we can put in something for permanent, temporary chain link fencing if it needs that. But that would be, the contractor would probably do for safety reasons.
Yeah, given the nature of the family, just wanted to be sure. Good. Thank you. That's a.
Jen, Larry, Jen's good, Larry's good. Where's Jim Rand? Jim Rand, you good? Okay, Jeremy, I think we're missing?
No.
Okay. And we already, is anyone that the public domain want to speak to this application? Seeing none, hearing none?
Am I in?
Yes, sir. We're talking about application on 26 Peach Hill Road. Do you have any comments?
Yeah, it's Steve Hardy. I just joined. We just got back from dinner. I apologize. We, as I, we noted, we did not get notice. And so I just caught the tail end of this, but there's some things that have been said that are not true that I want to correct.
Okay, welcome. So just state your name.
On the road somewhere. Where exactly would you travel?
Mr. Hardy, just state your name and address to the record, please.
Yeah, it's Steve Hardy, 22 Peach Hill Road.
Thank you. The floor is yours.
I just asked a question. Where exactly would this gravel be put down in the wetlands?
No, 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 no. If it's, the question was if, if any, if the driveway needs to be widened for some kind of truck for some reason to satisfy whoever needs it to be, my question was, was an area to be put it? Where that area would be is, is, you know, in question or it doesn't really matter at this point, but it's not a requirement. No.
No, I guess the question was like somebody had said that you could put it down next to the driveway. Those are wetlands.
It would never be approved in wetlands by EPC. I can guarantee you that.
So then where would it, where would it be put down?
Doug, could you ask that if it's, if it's necessary? You're muted, Doug.
There we go. What we talked about was that bulged area on the driveway, which was around 15, almost 15 feet wide there. Just widen that and lengthen that a little bit more. I did speak with Rich Jacobson about that today. And that would have to go, as Wilder mentioned, would have to go back to the EPC commission for approval because it is adjacent to the wetlands. It's not in wetlands, it's adjacent to the wetlands. So that had to get approval through the, through the wetlands.
Well, that's right. It's also our land, right? So, so, so I realize there's an easement over the existing road, but you're talking about putting it on our land? And then, and then the easement flags are within a matter of feet from there. The wetland flags. Guys, I apologize for coming into this late. We did not get notice on this. I explained that to Jeff. I'm not very happy. We didn't get notice. I understand that you guys did certificate of mailings. As you may know, I'm a very large developer in the state of Connecticut. And I checked with our planning attorneys this morning based on some of the stuff we've done. Normally this stuff is sent out certified so that you can approve. We just, we're doing a large project in East Norwalk, Connecticut. And, and we had to go through this very process. We sent out 600 certifies approximately six months ago during the pandemic. And, and that apparently is normal for Norwalk and Stanford. We did not receive notice. Some of our, our neighbors did and they alerted us to this, but we had prior plans this evening. But there's been a number of things that I just caught the tail end of, which, which actually quite frankly pissed me off. Suggesting that OSHA, I had my contractors who are a national contractor look at this yesterday. OSHA will not approve you building within five feet of a private residence. And anybody who says otherwise doesn't understand the regulations. So, you know, there's a bunch of issues with this application. We very much support the Browns as a family. We can see them build this home. But the way that this is getting jammed through with little thought, the fact that the construction timeline will take a lot longer than normal is not acceptable. There's just a lot of things that we weren't consulted on and quite frankly, I'm very pissed off.
Okay. I mean, I'm glad you are here so you can speak to the application and that's what, that's why it is a public hearing. Are there any other suggestions or things? We have your letters and we reviewed them. But this, this, as a public hearing time, this is the time to enter stuff into the record. So if there's anything else you want to add to the record, you're more than welcome.
Well, unfortunately I didn't hear the whole meeting because as I said, we, my brother in law's in from California. It's my mother in law's birthday. We were out tonight. We got back as quickly as we could for this. But, you know, I just don't, I mean, I looked at, I didn't have much time to look at it. I looked at it yesterday or on Sunday. I had our contractors, who's a national firm, billions of dollars, and we let them look at it yesterday. I mean, there's so many things in this plan that just, you know, we, we support the family. As I say, they're good people, they're a good family. We want to see them build the house, but not at the expense of us living through 18 months of what could be very dangerous and certainly a major inconvenience. And if they were, you know, if they knocked down the house, they've got a lot more room to stage. You know, we don't have the same traffic going in and out, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not that we don't want to see them build the house. We just, you know, having this jammed down our throat within days of this hearing is unacceptable.
We, sir, it's, I could, we can keep the hearing open for at least another week if you wanted to. If you need more time to review the materials or you could even watch the Vimeo, it's probably going to be up tomorrow. Whatever, Wilder, could, you might have kept the hearing open for a week?
With that, yeah, I guess. I mean, Adam Blank represents us. I don't know if anybody knows Adam from Willsey Rose in Stanford. He's our planning attorney in, in Connecticut or at least in Fairfield. So, I mean, I haven't even had a chance to have him look at this. So, you know, again, we really, I don't, I don't want this to come across as, I mean, we are pissed off because, you know, we didn't have a chance to look at this. And when I hear people who don't understand construction at all on this call telling me what OSHA will and will not do. I mean, I've done $2 billion worth of real estate development in the last three years. We know a hell of a lot more about this than, than, than some lawyer. So don't tell me what OSHA will or will not do or what the safety concerns are. I can have my contractors write you a letter tomorrow that will tell you about the safety concerns that they saw on that plan that were put together. So, you know. Unfortunately, I didn't get to see the whole presentation and we really want to give Jeff and Nikiko the benefit of, of the doubt here. But, you know, the fact that we didn't get a certified is outrageous. The fact that we weren't contacted is outrageous. Okay? So, you know, if you want to hold it open for a week and let us look at it, I'd like to meet with Jeff and talk it through and figure out if there's a better way to do this. But, but, you know, as I said, we want them to be able to build the house. We like them. They're a good family. They're good neighbors, but, but this is just not well thought out.
That, that's fine. We can keep it open. I mean, if you were, if you were notified late, you were notified late and we apologize.
We haven't been notified.
I'm sorry.
And we have neighbors that will attest to that.
Chairman Olmady, can you please set the record straight on the, on the certified? Because everyone was notified, correct?
No, buddy, you got a certificate of mailing. That is a difference between that and getting a certified. Most jurisdictions require a certified, not a certificate of mailing. I think what you did was a certificate of mailing, which just means you took it down to the post office, dropped it off, and they confirmed that they got the letters. Big difference.
That's correct. And Darian zoning does not require certified mailings. They require.
But we didn't get, we didn't get it for whatever reason. So whether they do or not, we didn't get it.
My, anyway, I think it would be productive if you and Jeff were to discuss this. And we continued this for a week so that you would have an opportunity to look through this. And if there's ways that we can address your. And if there's ways that we can address your concerns, your reasonable concerns, we're happy to do so. And if you have safety concerns, I'm sure Jeff will understand those once you explain them to him. And I would trust that we can reach some accommodation. But let's go from there.
That's fine. Okay. Who's asking?
It's Larry.
Oh, yes, Larry.
Yeah, I, I just like to say for the record, I'd like to remind the general public that all the commissioners here are volunteers, giving up their valuable time to do what they feel is right and good for the town of Darien. And to have the public come in and, I don't know. I, I guess I haven't done billions of dollars in business, so I might not be smart enough for this role. But frankly, I feel I put a lot into it. And I just wanted to put that on the record. And, and frankly, you guys don't have to, no one has to second it. I'd like to make a motion to close this hearing.
I'll second it. But before I do that, I'd like to say that Steve and I are in the real estate industry and we both probably have done $2 billion worth of deals. So I, I feel for you, Mr. Hardy, but just knowing your audience and the volunteers in the town, we are also real estate professionals, so.
Well, okay, that's fair. I didn't mean to suggest nobody doesn't know what they're doing. What I'm saying, suggesting is somebody, I think it may have been the lawyer, suggested that our comments were not, had, had no basis in fact, which, you know, you're talking about people who do this on a large scale for a living and not just myself, but our contractors, our lawyers, our consultants, et cetera, which I had to pull together within 24 hours. So that's what I was reacting to. Not that, that we don't appreciate your time, but that somebody suggested that OSHA, for instance, would not, would, would tolerate somebody living within four feet of a job site. That's just crazy.
That's fine. So we have a motion on the table to close the hearing. Did you second it, Jennifer? Okay. We can still discuss it. Go ahead, George.
I just wanted to make sure you asked for any final comments from the rest of the.
Yeah, no. Yeah. Is anybody else in the general, are you okay for now, Mr. Hardy?
Yeah, I guess. Are, are we holding it open for a week or not?
We're gonna, we're gonna vote on it right now.
Okay.
Anyone else have any comments on the motion? It's on the table. And no, anyone from the general public ever to comment to this application? Okay. The motion was made and seconded. Anybody in favor of closing this hearing? Jim Rand wants to say yes. Larry Warburton wants to say yes. Jennifer, you in favor of closing or keeping it open?
One week.
I think we should keep it open for a week.
Okay, George Riley?
I agree. I oppose the motion.
Okay. So the motion, I oppose the motion too. So the motion fails. So we will keep the application open for a week.
We'll continue it till Tuesday, May 4th, 7:30 PM.
Fantastic. Okay. And we're going to keep both applications open, Wiley.
Zone change and the special permit.
Perfect. All right. Great. Thank you. Next application. Special permit application number 258 B as in boy, La. This looks like tequila to me, but it's not. Takira Inc., Darien Place LLC, 1077 Boston Post Road, proposing to establish a new 1,911 plus minus square foot quick service restaurant within the portion of the first floor commercial space now being created in the back of 1077 Boston Post Road, the former Darien Playhouse Building. The subject property is located on the north slash west side of Boston Post Road, approximately 550 feet northeast of its intersection with Leroy. And it's shown on assessment map number 73 as lot number seven and not number 42 with shared parking lots 40, 41 in the CBD and PR zone. Yes, sir. George Riley.
Mr. Chairman, in deference to my colleague of the Rucci Law Group, I'm going to recuse myself and take a nap and come back for your next matter.
Probably see in 20 minutes. Hopefully Miss Abatakas keeps it to 20 minutes.
I'll do my best.
Jeremy, what do we got?
This is the back of the former Darien Playhouse Building. Now, I believe they call it Darien Place. The other two tenants that were approved were Lauren Lighting and Design and Kennedy Barber Shop. And Mr. Vicaro, who's, who's here on the call, expects those to go in within the next two months. So that's pretty exciting. And then this is the third tenant in the back, the proposal for this quick service restaurant. And Amy Zabatakas is here to present the application.
Fantastic. Amy, welcome. And we also got a letter from, I think, one of your Malone Room consultants or no?
SLR.
SLR, Park Consultant. Amy, welcome.
Good evening. Amy Zabatakas, Rucci Law Group, on behalf of the applicant La Taqueria. And yes, as was discussed, this is the, just to go back in time, you approved the redevelopment of the back of the old Darien Playhouse. Mr. Vicaro, who's on the call, was, is the landlord and owner of the building. And that project is coming along well. There are going to be residential apartments on the second floor and then the three retail spaces on the, on the lower floor. Two of the retail spaces have been fully leased out. So now we've got the last tenant for the space. Everything okay over there? Now, let me, in actual, if I can just do the screenshot, I just want to show you where we are in the back of the building. Let's see if that works. Oh, no. Okay. Sorry, I haven't used GoToMeeting on this computer and I'm going to have some problems with it. So I'm just not going to bother. But you can, you can go by and you'll see that the construction has gone along quite well and they're almost completed with the exterior back there. Yes, thank you, Jeremy. There's our back of the, of, of the building at this point. So to, we've got, so as a reminder, you know, of course, the question has always been for this space. It was the main topic of conversation when we did this redevelopment is what we're doing as far as parking. So as a reminder, this was a 100 space parking requirement movie theater before. As discussed, we have the lighting store, which is very low volume. And we have Kennedy's Barber Shop, which was, which was a special permit that you approved. They moved around the corner. You know, because of COVID, trying to assess parking right now is almost impossible. I will say that the parking lot has been filled up with the construction workers. We've got the construction ongoing in this lot and then there's construction going on in the old Kennedy's spot, which is going to be Glen Liquors. And because there's no one else parking downtown Darien, those construction workers are using the regular parking lot rather than parking offsite, which is what they would normally do. So I think to look at what's happening right now in these lots doesn't really give you a picture of, of, of parking. I also just think that because we don't know what's going to happen post-COVID, I, I personally am very skeptical of any parking analysis. But as you pointed out, we did have our, the parking team from Malone Room is now with SLR. They did look at their original plan and have said that they still think we have sufficient parking with what's on site and the municipal parking in the area using historical data. As, as was stated in the application, this is a quick serve restaurant. It is not designed, in fact, it is sort of against the applicant's business model to have people spend a lot of time in his restaurant. This is designed for people to come and it's counter service ordering. You order, you eat, you leave. Ideally, and why I think this is good for the town of Darien is you order and you eat and then you walk around town and go to the other businesses. I think that's because we can't look at this from a parking perspective right now. I think we really need to look at, is this a good addition to the town of Darien? And does this add to the businesses in town and does it support the other businesses in town? And I personally think that it does. He has a, a business open in Greenwich, so he can, and Dennis Lake, who's on the call, is the chef culinary institute. I'm, I unfortunately haven't had a chance to go by the restaurant in Greenwich myself, but I've heard the food is outstanding. That's one of the reasons why, why the Vicaros chose this particular tenant for their space, among other people that had come forward. So he knows that that's his business model. You've got a, you're, he's turning people over. He's got about 30 speed, 30 seats in the restaurant. You're going to see people for about 20 minutes at lunch, 30 minutes at dinnertime. And then there's also a big delivery component to the, to the application, which is why you actually will see in the letter from SLR that they are, I'm saying that right, is it? That they're suggesting that we consider some 15 minute spots out front. You know, I, I'm not sure if that's something that this commission is particularly fond of. I know you don't like having designated spots. These would be for the whole area, but short term spots. I, I think it's not a bad idea so that we do have that, those spots that are sort of the short term, right near the, right near the front of the business. The, if you recall from the prior application, the Vicaros are adding seven new spots to the back of the building. So it would be some of those new spots right at the rear there that we would designate as 15 minute spots. Let's see. The, I, I, what I think is interesting about this is, and actually, and I'll, I'll sort of segue into some of the letters that were, were received for the record from the neighbors, that I, I think that there is a need for this sort of faster pickup food for the offices and in, that are in town now and for the, the residential component that we're trying to bring into town. I think that the town of Darien, the, the composition is changing. As someone myself who works in the middle of the central business district, there aren't a lot of options at lunchtime to go and grab lunch. This would be perfect or to grab dinner. I would have loved to have grabbed dinner before this hearing. Instead, I had a granola bar. So those are the types of things that I think will add to the town. And to say that, you know, we don't have people working and living in town right now doesn't really acknowledge what the future of the town is. We are trying to, and, and so I think that that is, to, to say again, to guess at what we're going to have in town in terms of parking needs post-COVID, what, whether people are going to be, you know, still sitting for hours at Nero. All of those things I think are just conjecture. But what we can talk about is what's good for the town and what will help develop the town. And so that also goes to, you know, what are we doing as far as this particular lot? Well, when this project is finished, the, there will be a as-built site plan. And at that point, the Vicaros will work with the two other property owners that share this lot and will finalize a new shared parking agreement. It's been agreed to between all those property owners that what's, what we have in place now is going to continue until all the construction is completed. So it, it's certainly not a situation where anybody's not working on redoing that shared parking agreement. And as discussed, when we have the application filed, that's going to be redone and then submitted to the, to the town. So they have that in the record. And I should say, I kind of jumped into the meat of this, but I would like to make sure, and I think it is, that the application, the primary application for this site, primary special permit for the redevelopment is part of the record of this hearing. Cause I think a lot of the information that's in there is very relevant to what we're talking about now. We do have on the call, as was stated, we have Dennis Lake, who's the owner of the business. He, if you have any questions about the business itself. Lauren Meyer, who's the architect, who can discuss any of the, the floor plans if you'd like. And then Mr. Vicaro, who's the, the landlord. But I guess at this point, I'd like to see if there are any questions since you're trying to keep me under 20 minutes.
All right, Amy. Can you just go over the, the restaurant plan again? I'm just trying to make sure everyone knows where you're oriented. The bottom part here, this is, that's the rear parking lot. That's the entrance to the store.
Yeah, the entrance to this site will be from the rear parking lot. If you're looking at the back of the building, this is the, the tenant to the far left. You'll walk in, there's an order counter there. There's a certain number of seats. The, the front of the house is very small compared to, not very small, but much smaller than you would see in like a normal, like a Senna or a normal sit down restaurant. Because as I said, this is a quick service restaurant, a lot of takeout. So the kitchen actually takes up more than 50% of the floor space. And then we have a, a small number of seats in the front. Again, designed for sort of quick turnaround and takeout.
So what you do is you, you, you order at the counter, then you go grab a seat, kind of like, like a Chipotle type idea? Then you wait for your tacos to be ready?
Correct.
Okay. And then with regards to the takeout delivery stuff, how does that work? They go in and out the same front doors or a rear entrance, a rear exit?
There is a rear entrance to the site for fire code. Of course, there has to be an exit through the, out, out through the kitchen. I think that, that sort of, the idea would be, for the most part, it would be through the front of the house. Cause again, there's a counter right there when you first walk in. So people would, you know, you'd have your, your takeout bags there. You know, there is a possibility of potentially using the back door, but I think they're going to need to see how the flow is. But the, we're not asking for anything like that right now. It would just be front of the house.
So I mean, I, it's, I'm, I'm not into this Uber Eats stuff or DoorDash. That's when like the DoorDash guy comes to the front, they walk in, they grab their stuff and they leave. Is that how that works?
Correct. Yeah. For the most part with the DoorDash or the Uber Eats, the bag's ready and they just show that who it is and they can grab and go. It's a very quick in and out process.
Yeah, my daughter's my DoorDash person. She goes and picks it up. All right. I kind of sort of get it. Do you want anyone else from your team to present or we open it up to commissioners?
Unless you have specific questions for any of the members of the team. I know Mr. Vicaro has a few points that he'd like to make as the, as the landlord. I can have him speak now or maybe we can answer questions first and then he can add on.
Whatever, either way, that's fine. But I can answer the commission if they have any questions and then you can answer it. Jen, you have any questions on this application? Larry, any questions? Jim Rand, you okay?
I'm okay. Thank you.
Okay. Then Kara Gately is not here and George Riley is recused. Okay. Mr. Vicaro, welcome.
Thank you. Kind of few points, some of it Amy's already covered. I'll just emphasize a few things. The shared parking agreement, obviously it's been in existence for decades and, and it works today. But we are going to update it just because it, it makes sense. It still references United Artists and they're long gone. So we'll, we will update it as soon as we can do an as-built survey and start working on that. As it relates to the parking lot today, we've been on site for longer than a year, actually. We did begin construction in the fall of last year. We received the approvals from you all in June of last year. For the most part, the parking lot, you know, again, we're in a somewhat of a COVID world, seem to be coming out of it. But it operates at about 60% capacity. When the construction workers leave, will probably be more like 50% of capacity. And then there's certainly a, a number of people that are in the lot that maybe don't belong there, but we're not intending on doing anything about it because this, you know, we're just trying to be a good citizen and let them use the lot because it's wide open. We do think that most of our tenants, their business will perk up and resume to some extent. We do think that, and I don't say anything bad, but I do think that the, the shine is worn off of Cafe Nero. It was new in the early part of 2019 and then it suffered from COVID. But, but, you know, the novelty with restaurants sort of wears thin after a period of time. And we're probably at that point. So it'll have more of a stabilized group of patrons. When we started thinking about how we were going to lease the last space, the retail space, we looked for some guidance from the staff. And we asked a couple of questions. We had an orthopedic, orthodontist, rather. It was on Old Kings Highway, wanted to relocate in that space and we were told, no, doesn't fit. I think the regulations against it. Then we thought maybe Compass Real Estate looked like they weren't going to get approved at Uncle's. We thought, well, maybe that might be a good one. And it was not acceptable either. So when we suggested food, the staff indicated that that would be a, a positive sort of coincides with their thinking. I think that what, you know, again, it was subject to approvals and such. But I think what they were trying to suggest is that we wanted to create in the town, a little bit of a vibe and not have it be, you know, kind of a dead area. So that, you know, that would be our interpretation. So when we finally circled around food, there were three very accomplished restaurants that wanted, and they had more than one location. Every one of them had either, Taqueria was working on their second location. Most of them had many more than one location. But what we thought about is number one, we had to think about parking. Number two, we had to think about the impact on the other restaurant tenants. And then we had to think about the surrounding area. And so what we And so what we thought with the first two restaurants we had, those are sort of long stay patrons. And we knew that that was, we discussed that last year and in with planning and zoning and the commission. And, you know, we certainly didn't want anybody that was going to be a long term, you know, stayer. So the other thing that we realized, because we're there every day, is we like to pick up food and take it back to the office and have our lunch. It's really a treat to take out places. And it's really, you know, it's Uncle's, it's Playable and it's The Butcher Shop. And and that's, you know, that that area between I-95 and the train station. So there's very few choices. And then we sort of zeroed in on Dennis Lake's business primarily because he's an accomplished chef. His product is excellent. Amy already mentioned he's Culinary Institute. And and we hope that you all will enjoy his food as well. Just a couple of other thoughts, and Amy did hit on it, but I want to be a little bit more specific. When you look at front of the house of the restaurants we have in the building today versus the back of the house, the front of the house for Cafe Nero, as well as Senna, is about seventy thirty, seventy percent front of the house, thirty percent back of the house. And as relates to La Taqueria, it's more like with four hundred and fifty-five square feet as certified by the architect Lauren Meyer, over nineteen hundred and eleven square feet, it's twenty-three percent front of the house, seventy-seven percent back of the house. Roost, which is a tenant in one of our other buildings, it has about the same ratio. I would say somebody like Uncle's or The Butcher Shop is maybe fifteen eighty-five. But that in and of itself further defines it as being real takeout. And then I, you know, just a little bit away from La Taqueria for a second. But as you think about, as commissioners and you're thinking about planning, you know, and this is really about what the parking lot of the future would potentially look like. E-commerce sales as a percent of retail sales across the United States last year was around twenty-four to twenty-five percent. And that was up from fifteen percent in 2019. And roughly five to six years ago, it was seventy-eight percent of total retail sales. So the trend line has been going pretty much like this. And and obviously, people are shopping on the internet primarily for convenience. And we don't really see that abating. We do think that, you know, I think we all would agree, last year was an anomaly and we would expect, you know, some of that to plateau. But it's really hard to figure out exactly the use of any parking in the future with with such, you know, powerful e-commerce that's, you know, you know, being, you know, converting everything as retail in the states today. So, look, I think the other thing that we should keep in mind as we think about, we made a decision to urbanize Darien between Corbin and the Rotten Heights. And for example, I think in that corridor between I-95 and the train station, maybe there's thirty apartments. I'm not sure if there's much more than that, but that's just a guess. Anybody that has a better guess, it's okay to throw that out there. Corbin's going to build about one hundred and fifteen new apartments. So we're going to triple the amount of people pretty quickly when Corbin is done with the amount of people living downtown. And they're going to be looking for, you know, a place to eat. And, you know, we need to be thinking about that. And in addition, they're going to be looking for some downtown life. So which goes back to, I think, the guidance we got from the staff is there's going to be some notion that there has to be some vibrancy to the downtown. And in addition, we know that when Corbin gets started, there'll be some disruption to downtown, no matter what. And that'll last for probably three years. And we better make sure that we've got something on our, on the other side of the street that is working pretty well. So the the other thing that the commission has wanted to accomplish for, I don't know, years and years and years, probably Jeremy will know, but I think it's probably like twenty years, was somehow or another to link the sports shop through Grove Street and then all the way to the train station. And the last stop on our site is La Taqueria before you cross into Grove Street. And so that's the final link. And so you may want to kind of think about that. If that were to be sort of dead space as opposed to something where there's a little bit of activity, that would be an important thing. I think just a comment in general, again, away from La Taqueria, but about what we set out to do a year ago, is we got the approval in June. We think we're going to have two retailers that are going to be able to occupy on or around June 1st. We have four apartments. We have not listed the apartments for rent. One person in Darien made a reservation, wants the apartment. So that's already rented. And if you think about the the building of the building itself, it's been kind of a fun and exciting project because the building was built in nineteen twenty-five. We'd be able to take a lot of new materials and mix it with the old and create sort of something that has like a Soho sort of feel to it. And then I would say the the last point is, is when we, you know, the benefit of having this last tenant in place is that when we open, we're going to be full. There's not going to be any empty storefronts. So anyway, thank you for your time and hopefully you'll consider La Taqueria.
Fantastic. And you're, just to make sure we're right, you're connecting Grove Street to the Playhouse, right?
Yes, sir. It was one of the strong suggestions from our commissioner.
Oh, really? I didn't know that.
I believe that was a requirement of the approval, in fact. So yes, that connection will be made. And I think you'll, you know, I think you'll see, I'm sorry that my tech wasn't working with me. But, you know, that if you if you drive back by there, I mean, it's still a construction site, granted, but you can see how it's going to really change what was back there and make it an area that people want to walk in and connect, as we said, connect that whole area and have really a circle now with Post Road and Grove Street, which is, I think, exactly what the commission's been trying to accomplish.
It's you're a hundred percent correct. Just, Jennifer.
Just for the record, the restaurant proposes to serve liquor. It has a bar. Amy, you submitted a picture of a very small bar area. I think it has five or six seats. One question that was brought up in David Genovese's letter was relative to the floor plans and the amount of indoor seating. Let's assume a non-COVID situation. Did you have any thoughts on that, Amy?
I'm not entirely sure I understand what the what the question is that you're posing. I mean, we've shown the number of seats. The the space in Greenwich does have a have a bar area. And similar to this one, again, it is sort of quick serve. I think many of the restaurateurs are hoping that the governor will continue post COVID, the idea that you can do the takeout, mixed drinks and things like that. That would certainly be a boon to this this particular restaurant. But it is, it's not, this is, we are not proposing a bar. That's not the main focus of the business. It is, the main focus of this business is food. Although I am told he makes a mean margarita, again, haven't had a chance yet.
You gotta get out.
I know, I gotta get out of my office.
Okay, that's it.
Okay. Now, the other comment we have, we have a letter that was submitted to the file from the owner of the Darien Sports Shop that says they support the application subject to a review of the Malone McBroom Park Study. And then the commitment by Atlanta to conclude the shared parking agreement. Do you want, I mean, I'm assuming that you're going to agree to that?
Well, we, so, yeah, I mean, basically, we have, we did submit a review from Malone McBroom. And yes, I think that it is, we've, we've already discussed with them that once the, and this has always been the plan, once the site plan is done, we're going to amend that that shared parking agreement. But there's, there is a shared parking agreement in place. It's not as if there isn't one right now.
But now SLR is Malone McBroom, that's.
Correct, yeah. I'm not sure if Neil moved over or if it's the same, company's got a new name. I didn't do that, but yes, that's the same guys.
Okay, that's fine. So what do you, what do you want to do with this? Does this make it into the resolution or no?
That would be up to the commission, but that could be one of the conditions, as Amy mentioned. They're planning on doing it anyway.
Right, I mean, I would put this in the resolution, right?
Well, I think it's in, Steve, I'm sorry to interrupt. It's in the, in the existing resolutions, special permit, there is that, you know, that when the when the shared parking agreement is is redone, that it's going to be submitted for the commission. I don't think it's appropriate to have that be sort of further defined in this use permit. I mean, it's not a, it's not a conditional thing. It's it's something that we've been, that we're asked to do. Because like I said, there is a shared parking agreement. I don't want to have a situation where if the party, you know, this is a private property agreement. I don't think the commission wants to get involved in in, you know, refereeing that, which is what we agreed to last time.
Good point, yeah. I do not want to get involved in that, that's for sure. Okay, so we'll somehow figure that out.
Yeah, I think we can, again, we can rely on what we did the first time.
Yeah, okay. Would anybody else in the general public speak to this application? Is he needed? Frank Kazi?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Grand, Mr. Kazi, floor is yours. There's Nina Becker.
Thank you very much. I just want to reiterate the fact, I represent Eleven Twenty LLC, which is the building, where the main tenant of which is the Darien Sports Shop. And Gina Zangrillo at the Sports Shop has asked me to basically represent her in this hearing. We fully support John Vacaro's application. We've sent the letter as you've, as you've just read. There is a shared parking agreement that currently in draft form that exists. It has not been executed primarily because we've been waiting for the the ASBILD survey from from the, from John Vacaro's development to be, to be prepared and be made as an as an addendum to that agreement. Because that agreement will speak to how that parking lot is maintained. And it's going to be, the maintenance of that parking lot is going to be proportioned based on square footage or number of parking spaces. I mean, who plows it, all that kind of stuff. But and I think that, and I know, Steve, you got a copy, as did I, and I think, John, you as well. I think we all got a copy from from David's long email today. And I, and I think it's fair to say, I just want to make mention of this fact. The the next three years, as John Vacaro had indicated, are going to be very messy downtown. And the selectmen or the parking authority of Darien, and to my knowledge, the the selectmen have are not, have not prepared or as far as I know, what they're, what's the trade that's coming down the tracks over the next three years? The sporting, the parking lot behind, that's the subject of this, of this, this hearing. We will be fine. I mean, we, John and I have discussed this and, you know, we'll be fine. But I think in the grand scheme of things, there has to be some, some really oversight on the part of the town. And maybe this is the proper role for the for planning and zoning as the planning element of the town to take control of this and really manage what goes on over the next three years. Because I, you're not coming, it's not coming out of the selectman's office. So I, I would strongly urge the the Planning and Zoning Commission to somehow or they get their finger into this because it's going to be a mess. I mean, you can imagine a cement mixer driving down the Post Road at nine o'clock in the morning. I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be difficult for a lot of people. So I, with that in mind, like I said, we we hardly support John's application and look forward to the commission giving its approval.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your support. Would anybody else like to speak to this application?
I would, Steve. Hi, how are you? It's.
Hey, Nina Becker. Yeah. Great, thanks. Please just state your name and your affiliation for the record.
Sure, my name is Nina Becker. I'm a local retail and hospitality specialist in the area. And I represent Dennis and La Taqueria Concept. And I just want to, you know, for the record, this is, as mentioned before, is a very true fast casual eatery. And as, you know, it's got a very simple goal. It's to serve the best, authentic flavor, quickly and priced right. And I just want to let you guys know that, you know, during the pandemic, it opened its doors in 2019. And during the pandemic, it has not shut, so the shutdown, it did not close once. It stayed open. It served its purpose. And if that, if for anything that really does illustrate the concept is not rely on people sitting at the restaurant. And we've chosen this address, you know, the Vacaros, because it somewhat mimics Ten Greenwich Avenue. And we all know how wonderful parking is on Greenwich Avenue. So if you have any, you know, genuine concern or Mr. Genovese's concern is indeed parking, you know, I'm going to highly suggest, you know, David, which I'll text him after this and or send him a note. And for anyone literally listening is to please visit La Taqueria. I invite you to experience the location and the concept and to also show that the parking is not going to be an issue. And I'm confident that you'll agree with me. So that's about it. So I hope you guys will all agree and I look forward to seeing you guys at La Taqueria.
Thank you, Nina, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Would anybody else like to speak to this application? Any commissioners, any questions? Amy, ready to close?
I think we are, if there are no further questions.
Fantastic. I intend to merge them to close. So Jennifer, seconded by Jim Rand, all in favor?
Four to zero. Thank you.
There we go. Thank you, appreciate it, Amy. We're going to session out to you as soon as possible.
Thank you. Will you be voting tonight or a different night, you think?
No, a different night.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. One, two, three, four, we got other stuff down here. What else is next? Next one. Next, coastal site plan review numbers, one oh six B is a void flood damage prevention application. Ninety-six B is a void land filling and regreting application. Number four ninety-nine, Michael and Nancy Hurling, trustees, eighty-nine, five by River Road. Proposal to raise the existing residence to the foundation and construct a new single federal residence in the same location with associated filling and regreting. Construct a new deck and patio, connect to the town sewer, sanitary sewer system and saw storm warning trip management and perform related site development activities within regulated areas. The zero point seven five plus minus acre section down the east side of Five Mile River Road, approximately one thousand two hundred and fifty feet south of its intersection with Berry Lane, instrument of Cessars Map, number sixty-six, ASLOT twenty A in the R one half zone. We saw this property a month ago, right?
That's correct. The prior application that came before the commission about a month or two months ago was withdrawn by the applicant. This application was resubmitted. And we, because it's right on the Norwalk border, we referred it out to the Western Connecticut Council Governments. They sent an email dated March twenty-fifth. The opinion of West Cog staff is that the proposal is of local interest and with minimal, minimal inter municipal impact, therefore, it is not being forwarded to adjacent municipalities and the regional staff is making no comment. Because of the coast, we referred it to the state DEEP. They sent an email dated March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. That's in commission members packets. That is a three page email, which they sent out. Commission members have that, that's in the file posted to the town website. Attorney Bob Maslin's here on behalf of the applicant. He did forward over three letters of support from neighbors, which we did not give to the commission members, and a letter dated April twenty-seventh responding to the various items in the records. So look, Mr. Maslin, take it from here. This is a proposal to knock down the existing house and construct a new house.
Chairman. Mr. Chairman, reporting for duty.
Thank you. Mr. Riley is back and that is so noted in the minutes. Mr. Maslin, take it away, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Robert Maslin. I'm the attorney for the applicants. Fred, can you give me the screen there so I can run through my PowerPoint? Mr. Chairman, I understand my instructions are to be brief, given the hour.
It is almost ten thirty.
Yes, well, the last one ran a little more than the twenty minutes. Let me see, I think I am on the right. Okay. And then I need to put this, all right. So you should see the cover slide to our presentation. Is that what you're seeing on your screen?
We can see it perfectly. Thanks, Bob.
Good, okay, all right. With me are, I know Mike Hurling is here. I don't know if Nancy is on with him, but his video is on. Yasi Wuzinski, the architect, is here. Doug Devesky. And Matt Pop is also here, who is the landscape architect. So I thought I'd run through this really quickly. Most of what, or almost all of what I have in the PowerPoint. I have in the PowerPoint is in the application materials. So I'll just kind of do everything quickly in an, an overview fashion. What we're proposing is not demolition of the entire structure. We're taking it down to the foundation. Updating or repairing the foundation is necessary. And then building a two-story, uh, house, single-family residence on that foundation. Some minor landscape, uh, uh, features, uh, some additional plantings and minimal grading. Uh, Doug Deveste has designed a new stormwater quality system because we're on pretty much the open water here. There will be a new lateral sewer connection. The existing septic system will be, uh, uh, abandoned as a septic system and the leaching system will be used as part of the water quality system. Uh, resurface the driveway after the sewer lateral is put in and, uh, a replacement deck in an area that, uh, it was previously somewhat restricted. It's, it's a practical matter. It's not restricted anymore. The coastal features, uh, lowest finished floor complies, well, the whole structure, the whole project complies with the flood elevations and the venting requirements. The entire structure is in flood zone A and, uh, flood zone VE is off to the south of the property. The height is two stories, not two and a half. 23 feet, four inches, even with the higher, uh, first floor elevation, which is over six feet, uh, less than what is allowed under the 30-foot zoning maximum. Again, elimination of an onsite septic system, which should be a big plus. Stormwater quality system, uh, where no stormwater management to speak of is, uh, on the site now and certainly nothing that's engineered. Some new plantings along the easterly seawall. That's just inside the seawall to kind of, uh, add as a, a, a little kind of a filtering feature, uh, along that part of the wall. You'll see in the site plan and some of the photographs where that is. Uh, mature trees will be, um, preserved as a 48-inch beach and a 24-inch Kinko. I'll show you those on the plans as well. And the, uh, new house will be, uh, climate controlled geothermally and it'll have solar energy. Uh, the HVAC system is being removed. Here are the aerial photographs. This is the, right at the part of the river that either becomes narrower as you go up street or suddenly opens. This is that long dock. The Hurlings dock is right here. This dock is actually shared now with the owner of 91 Five Mile River. So it's a, a combined, uh, dock arrangement. This is a close-up aerial. Uh, it, it's from a few years ago where, um, these aerials were done at the time of year when you didn't have a lot of foliage. As is the case in almost all of the GIS system, there is a little discrepancy of a few feet in the boundaries. So this may look like the driveway encroaches onto the neighbor's property, but it does not. Site photos. Uh, these are in the application. I'll just run through these quickly. Uh, I'll stop at this one for a second. This is where some new, uh, plantings are going. Uh, it's a, I'm not big on, uh, plant names, but it's a title, or rather a, uh, waterfront type rose bush. Um, Matt will tell you in a bit what that is. But this gravel is already here and it does function as a, uh, kind of a riprap and, and filtering devices. Whatever sheet flow makes it all the way across the lawn, uh, to here before it hits the seawall. Seagrass titled vegetation on the, uh, uh, west side of the seawall. And the rest of these are pretty straightforward. This, uh, stone wall retaining wall is staying. This is along the boundary and these plantings up above here are also staying. Driveway, uh, leading out to Five Mile River Road. Uh, this wall is, for the most part, going to remain. This is a view from the deck looking out downstream toward the Long Island Sound. If you turn to your left, you'll pick up these two docks and across the water is the Rowayton Shoreline. Another view of the Rowayton Shoreline from that yard, looking a little bit toward the northeast. Uh, I have the surveys in here. Uh, this is existing conditions. This little crosshatched area is a pedestrian easement to get back and forth from 91 Five Mile River Road back and forth to the dock. You'll see the flood zones called out here. This is a flood zone boundary. Uh, flood zone VE is down south of this. AE is above it and you'll see, uh, all of the existing structure is in AE. There is a boundary right here at the end or beginning of the driveway, depending on which way you're going. From this line down to Five Mile River Road is flood zone X, which is a non-hazard type flood zone. And you'll see the new construction is pretty much in the same footprint. This gray area is a building envelope that was established years ago for a house. Uh, of note, uh, we have these two mature trees that I mentioned before. Those are staying. This area in here is subject to a restriction for the benefit of the property to the north and you can't build anything in here. There's a similar area over here. Um, and, and when Steve Pearson did this subdivision back in the seventies, I think he, he recorded three different maps before he decided on the one he wanted. Uh, but this area here is, was originally going to be part of 91, but it turned out that it became part of 89, but it's restricted. So you can't, can't build any structures on it. Doug Deveste's, uh, engineering site plan. Uh, Doug, do you want to just take a minute to go through this? I know we're running late. Can you be brief? You got to turn your mic.
Thanks. Um, Doug Deveste, fresh engineer, representing the applicant. Um, the driveway slopes from Five Mile River Road to the east, uh, towards the garage. There's an existing catch basin in the, in the driveway, uh, that will be removed. Uh, new catch basin will be installed on the south side of the driveway. Um, and that highlighted that rectangle area that Bob's almost pointing to is the old septic leaching fields that will be, um, used for the stormwater quality man, for the stormwater quality. So we're picking up all the driveway runoff, some roof air, uh, the roof areas and a little bit of lawn area that'll be brought into the, um, into the gallery system. We'll, we're handling the first inch of runoff, uh, the water quality volume. Um, so we're going to protect, we're going to collect all that water and let, and trade into the, into the ground. Anything that doesn't, that will sheet flow off into the Five Mile River. Um, only minor regreting will be on the north side of the, of the garage that will allow the water to drain, um, of, from the north end of the, uh, north end of the garage out towards, uh, the Five Mile River Road. Um, so we're going to abandon the septic tank, pump and crush it, and then put in a new, um, E1 grinder pump that will pump it up to the existing sewer in Five Mile River, uh, road. And then we are also providing steel fence around the construction site area. That's basically, that's, that's, that's the engineering in a nutshell.
Uh, just to make one, thanks Doug. Just to make one comment, uh, in, ahead of where, where I'm going to get to it a little more in detail. The stockpiling area is here. The DEP letter suggests moving this out of flood zone AE and moving it into flood zone X. That's really not feasible because flood zone X is the driveway.
Yeah, you don't have it.
Cut off access. So it, it's really not feasible. But another point to make is that this is not a large stockpile. Is, as we mentioned, as Doug mentioned, very minimal grading and, uh, we're not digging any new foundations or anything like that. So, uh, to the extent that material has to be piled up, it's not going to be a very big pile. Uh, I put the other, uh, non-colored-in site plan in here if you have any questions or you want something that's clear, or these are the details if you have questions. And, um, I think this is for Yasek, uh, couple of minutes. Yasek, can you go through these quickly? Yasek?
Very brief. Uh, the, the volume of the house, uh, is pretty similar to the existing. It actually resembles it because it's, uh, pretty much the design that we had the first time around. We try to keep it low, uh, unobstrusive, uh, not really blocking anyone's view. Uh, we're keeping the foundation, but everything else is new, which will allow us to do a house that's going to be energy efficient, especially since we're going to have, uh, you know, solar panels and geothermal. So that's pretty much it. Um, you know, again, it's, it's not any bigger and any taller than the existing house.
So this is the front elevation looking toward west?
Yeah, this is the, yeah, the, this is the water side. Yep. Uh, this is where you see the garage. Uh, we're changing the two doors into one door. Uh, and, um,
Steps.
The arrangement of the garage and the house remains the same. Uh, this is the elevation looking at the, uh, river. Um, up there at the top of the roof between the two gables, that's the area where we're going to have solar panels. Right there.
This area, here's the deck, right?
That's the deck. That remains at the same height. Well, it, except for, uh, the fact that we are raising the house and with it, the deck. So the, the deck is going to be a little bit higher. But again, it's not really blocking anyone's views. Uh, you can see that in the site elevation, uh, the arrangement of the deck and the steps leading down to the existing grade. That grade is not really changing.
You can see the flood venting?
Yeah, there are three flood vents. Uh, there's one here on the left side of the door and two on the right. Uh, those would allow the water to come then out as per FEMA regulations.
Okay. This is the side looking at what you would call the front door.
That's the front door and that's the garage there on the left. Yep.
And it's basically the same house from the application from a.
Pretty much the same. Yep. We kept the design. I, I think it works. Um, the area between, yeah, and that's the second floor. There were four bedrooms up there. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Herring smiling. The only question I had, just real quick, I think, um, uh, Doug Deveste said there's going to be a, um.
Turning to the sewer is going to require a generator, right Doug?
That ejector pump? You're muted, Doug.
Doug?
Yeah, I'm here. I got it. Um.
Generator.
It'll be ejector pump, but there is storage in the, in the, in the, in the chamber itself. So, uh, but I, I, I'm not sure. I'll have to ask, uh, Yasek or the, uh, Mr. Hurling if there's going to be a generator or not. I assume there's going to be a generator.
Well, actually, we are going to have power walls. So those are.
We're going to.
Okay. Hold on. One at a time. One at a time.
Yeah, so we're not going to, we're not, we're not going to have a generator. We're going to have three Tesla power walls mounted in the garage, which will, uh, give us, um, redundant energy for prolonged periods of time, much longer than the generator will provide. Unless you also have solar panels too. I get it. Okay. That's fine.
For the record, that was Mike Hurling who just spoke.
Understood. Thank you, Beau. All right. We're good. I mean, I don't know, uh, no, no offense to Matt Pop, but I don't really think we need to go through the, um, the, the landscaping.
I didn't make it on the first page.
This is that row of roses over here I mentioned before.
Right. Overlooking the, overlooking the river. It's not anybody's view line. Okay.
All right. Comments? We got an agent approval from the EPC and the commission itself was okay with that. The, the Five Mile River Commission wrote a letter at the last application. We didn't hear from them this time. Uh, but they did, I think the most, the only substantive comment they had was, uh, suggesting adding plantings along the landward side of the eastern seawall, which we did. Darren wrote a 20 paragraph set of comments in my letter that I submitted today. I, uh, responded to all of those. Most of them are descript, descriptive comments that summarized various aspects of the application. Uh, he also mentioned, uh, things like uh, permitting requirements for street opening and, and sewer lateral connection. And he's got a, a form in there that he's asking us to complete under a DEP general permit for municipal drainage. Uh, the objective of that process is to reduce a connection between Five Mile River and developed sites. And we're doing a significant reduction here because we're going from no quality and no stormwater management to a, an engineered system. Uh, the health department, uh, commented, they want a, a certification that the, uh, septic system is abandoned properly. And, um, of course we'll do that. No comments of any substance from West Cog. The DEP, I, I went section by section in their letter, but basically these are the general, uh, uh, categories. Flood compliance with venting and open joint, non-mortared patio and stepping stones. That's provided for in the plans. S and E controls provided for in the plans. I already explained our situation with moving the stockpile and, um, recommends minimizing removal of mature landscaping, which we've certainly are doing the best we can. Uh, the letter also mentions existing dock permit uh, and asks to make sure we're in compliance. We are in compliance. And, um, uh, any future work that needs DEP permits, of course, we'll take care of that the right way. I submitted the neighbor support letters and any questions?
I think, I think we're good. I know I'm good. The only thing, I, you know that you have to have that elevation certificate, right?
Uh, well, you typically get elevation certificates for insurance. If you want us to get one as a condition, just to, as if it's an ASBIL.
Get out of the flood zone. Yeah. You got to get out of the flood zone.
We, we can certainly do that.
That goes along with the ASBIL survey. Okay. Thank you. Um, I'm good. It's the same application. Any commissioners, anybody questions this application? George Riley, you okay? Questions? He's saying now he's good. With, Jen Leahy's got a thumbs up. Larry Warble's got a thumbs up. Okay. Um, I want to push this one. Does anybody in the general public have any questions for this applicant? Jeremy, did I miss anything?
Thank you for spending 15 minutes of your evening with us.
Thank you. Welcome to the party. Um, with that said, uh, we're ready to close if you are.
I am. I think we have everything covered here. Thank you very much.
Great. Uh, motion to close. Looking forward. That's Jennifer, second George Riley. All is in favor? Good luck with your house, Mr. Herring. It's much nicer. Good luck.
I should deliberate.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We will deliberate on this next week and get you probably a, uh, resolution the weekend, uh, two weeks after, right? Yeah. Cause whatever's meeting there. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Good luck to you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Uh, and we're done. That concludes our general meeting for tonight. Now we go, public hearing for tonight. Thank you, Jeremy. It's getting late. Wow, Jesus. The general, we're going to go to the general meeting. We have, uh, deliverable possible addition on the following. We have three draft resolutions. The first one is a special permit application, uh, number 117G as in George, site plan. Uh, in the Rothen Press Period Church, 23 and 25 Norton Avenue. This is the application to, um, where they knocked down that house on Rothen Avenue. I think the address is 23. They're connecting driveway to 25. And the only reason why we saw it is because it's a special use in the zone. Craig Flair is an engineer and we have a draft resolution that was, um, evilly put together. Anybody have any questions, comments, scriptures, errors, changes? Okay. Once again, Fred and Jeremy did a nice job. And you have a new person. It's a lot of your folks kind of interested. Who's Tamara? Okay, with that said, I would enter a motion to approve the draft as submitted. That's Jim Rand, seconded by Larry Warble. All is in favor?
Zero.
As five zero. Fantastic. Thank you, everybody. Next item up for bid is coastal site plan review number 288B as a boy flood damage prevention application. Number 329C is in Charlie, Zachary and Brez. Uh, Jack, Zachary, Brez and Jennifer Kengas at 25 Brush Island Road. This is the new dock that's on Brush Island Road that goes into Holly Pond, right Jeremy?
Yes.
Okay. We have a draft resolution. John Hiltz, who was one of our dock specialists, frequent flyers, was the, uh, representative of the applicant. Um, we have a lot of these in town. Um, we have a lot of these in town. Uh, no, probably, yeah, we have no public comments on this one. Everything is waived. Uh, but, you know, I, I read it. Everything looked good to me when I saw it. Questions, comments, scriptures, errors, changes, anything? Jennifer's saying no. That's it. I think, looking for a motion to approve as submitted. Larry Warble, seconded by George Riley. All's in favor?
Five to zero.
Five to zero. There we go. Bingo. Five to zero is written. Next item up for bid. Uh, land filling and regreting application number 498, Danato and Christian Picone, 40 Morley Lane. Uh, they were building a new patio and pool house, this one. We have a draft resolution. McCord Engineering was the guy that did it last, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, what else? This was kind of simple. The guy, I think this, this guy was really quick. Um, questions, comments, scripters, errors, changes to this one? And then Jennifer's making a motion to approve. I can see her hand moving. Uh, it was good. Okay. I think Jim Rand just made the motion. Looking for a second. Jennifer, comment. There you go. All in favor? Fantastic.
Zero.
Five to zero. I feel like it's a silent movie now. Everyone's got their microphone off. Talking myself. Uh, we already did that already. Go. Uh, chairman's report. Uh, there is no chairman's report tonight. Pass. Any other business requires two thirds voted commission? There's no votes being taken. That's a pass. Uh, next meeting is gonna be May 4th. Jeremy, what do we got on May 4th?
May 4th, we have the, uh, continuation of the two Peach Hill hearings we had tonight. Uh, three proposals put forth by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, and then we'll have more deliberations on some of the matters tonight as well as possibly 711 and BMW.
Okay. May 11th, we have.
May 11th, uh, 11th off the top of my head is um, uh, probably the final votes on 711 and maybe BMW and some of the matters tonight.
Okay. And then just for the record, we added a meeting today on May 18th, and that would be.
Parklands.
That's for.
Most of that meeting will be dedicated to parklands.
Okay. Um, and relative to.
And Jeremy, I, I, I believe, I, I believe I'm, I'm away on the 18th, actually. So.
Okay. Thank you, Larry.
Make sure you got enough other people there.
Yep.
You're gonna have, it's Kara Gately. These are accused, right?
Yeah, it's gonna be tight. Larry Warble out on 518. Kara Gately accused. Got it.
Great. So that means that's for.
Means we need everyone else showing up.
Okay. And I think that meeting is, um, on the 18th. Anyone that's welcome to come to town hall. You're welcome to come to town hall. I think that's gonna be our first week, cause the, the, you saying no or yes?
Uh,
Maybe.
Truly to town.
Okay. And then I think a lot of the restrictions get lifted on May 19th. Um, but the new rooms aren't done yet. So with that said, I would add, take, extend a motion to adjourn. Yeah, but Jennifer's got her hand held high. Jim Rand seconded. Close in favor? That's unanimous. Motion to close is passed.
Good night, all.
Good night, all. Yes. Thank you, Larry. I'm not.